To go ahead and get the meeting call to order, I'm going to start by taking role. Councilmember Carson.
Carson, present.
Councilmember Arnold.
I'm present.
Myself, present, and Vice Mayor Ferricks.
I am here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Great. Can I get an approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Ferricks.
All right, Councilmember Carson.
Carson, aye.
Councilmember Arnold.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Vice Mayor Ferricks.
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman.
Aye.
Perfect. So this is the City Council meeting of Tuesday, April 19th, and we are first up on our agenda is a joint discussion with the Natural Resources Commission. And they see that we have our liaison here, and I believe all of the commissioners that will be present. So will the chair be leading this discussion?
Okay, do you want me to answer that, Karen?
Yes, Meg Slattery is our brand-new chair, and she will be leading the discussion. John Johnston, our vice chair, had hoped to be here, but he's had a family emergency. So we have, at my last count, five of our eight commissioners, including our newest commissioner, who has not yet even started. So Meg, as you go through your presentation, you might want to ask each commissioner that's here to say a brief word on this slide. So I'm going to let you take the lead. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Karen, and thank you, Gloria, and to the members of City Council for having us. I think this is probably a good slide for everyone to introduce themselves. So I will start. My name is Meg Slattery, and I'm a PhD candidate in the Energy Systems Program at UC Davis. This is my second year on the Natural Resources Commission, and I actually joined as an alternate originally. So, you know, never thought that I would be here today, but I'm very excited to be here. John couldn't join us, unfortunately. So all of that and past it, Karen, do you want to introduce yourself? And then we can just move down the list.
Sure. Hi, I'm Kira Tuso. I'm an environmental scientist at the State Water Board. I work primarily on water quality policy, and this is also my second year with the commission.
I'm Tom Ross, UC Davis professor emeritus from Plant Biologist. It's my second, starting the second year on the commission, and I'm the grandfather. Thank you.
I guess Michelle's not here. So I'm Richard McCann, and I'm a consultant in energy, environmental, and water issues on economics and in the regulatory affairs field. I previously served on the Utilities Commission and was on the committee that identified Valley Clean Energy as a option for the city and county.
I'm not sure if we have Naiyeli on, but Jacob Burn, the newest, or almost the newest member of the commission. I start later this month. Looking forward to joining. I work for the Department of Conservation right now, focused on fighting climate change in disadvantaged communities, as well as fighting forest fires and creating more resilient forests as well. So very excited to be here and to be joining all of you. Thank you.
And thank you, Jacob, for joining us, even though your term hasn't officially started. We appreciate it. Can we go to the next slide? So our enabling resolution, I'm sure you are all familiar with, but it touches on a variety of different issues related to natural resources and sustainability. So that includes water, air quality, solid waste and toxic substances, promoting the use of sustainable energy to mitigate climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and then also advising on natural resource legislation. So it's a pretty broad mandate or enabling resolution, which is why I think you see we have a lot of kind of varied and dispersed expertise among us on the commission. And it supports quite a few city council goals, because almost everything relates back to energy, water, waste, and air in some capacity. Can we go to the next slide? So I'm going to start by just giving a review of our major activities and kind of what we've been up to since you last heard from the Natural Resources Commission, which I believe was in 2019, and was a very different commission than what you're seeing before you on Zoom now. One of our main activities that we've been working on is advising city staff during the design and implementation of kind of developing the 2020 to 2040 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, or the CAP, as I will refer to it. So in the past year, a lot of what this has looked like is receiving updates from city staff on what progress has been made, as well as from the consultant. And then we also host liaisons from other commissions that participate in those discussions. So we've been giving feedback on the process, on the technical advisory committee, on different priority actions, and then also on the assumptions that are going into modeling the impact of different draft actions. Next slide. We've also been providing in-depth review of the DISC proposal. So that has entailed giving input on different sustainability features, including their transportation demand management plan, the water and habitat management, and citing of foldable taic panels. But my understanding is that the Natural Resources Commission also used to give input on a variety of other environmental impact reports and developments, but this is the main one that we've been focusing on, at least since I've been part of the commission. And this is kind of similar to the CAP, in that we're giving feedback on a variety of different sustainability aspects, so water, transportation, and energy. And generally, I think we've provided recommendations along to City Council and kind of commentated on what we've seen from the updated CAP based on recommendations that we gave in the previous year. Next slide. We also give review and feedback on city initiatives that are more specific to our different topic areas. So within the realm of energy and transportation, we heard about the electric vehicle infrastructure implementation and have been updated on the progress of that grant application and implementation. We also learned about the fueling facility study and gave feedback and recommendations on that. And I think before I joined, my colleague in the Energy Graduate Group, Greg Miller, was involved in this, but more looking at building electrification and energy efficiency reach code ordinances. Under the topic of water, we get updates on the water management plan and give feedback on those, and the implementation of AB 1688, which relates to gray water. And then finally, we've been hearing more recently, updates on the implementation of SB 1383 about solid and organics waste and the integrated pest management policy. And so in all of these, I think we are, our role is kind of just hearing and providing feedback of residents of Davis who are interested and care about these issues. And I think it also has been helpful, because now we all are more aware of what the city is doing and can also kind of tell people that we know about it. So I really enjoyed kind of having that inner, that inside understanding of what's going on. Next slide. We also had formed a couple task-specific subcommittees in the past couple of years. And I think they, the members of these subcommittees deserve a lot of credit, because I know they put a lot of work into getting really specific recommendations and working on these more specific topics. So one of these had to do with leaf blowers. They know there was a large survey distributed, and I think Hannah Safford, our former chair, was very involved in this. But there is a survey which got a lot of very strong responses, I know, on both sides. And so they worked with Parks and Rec Commission Liaison and submitted, I think, recommendations on a potential gas-powered leaf blower ban and phasing those out to electric leaf blowers. And then another task-specific subcommittee was our parking lot shade two-by-two, which was collaborating with the Tree Commission and looking at the best practices and recommendations for putting solar panels in trees and to shade parking lots. Next slide. We also annually are responsible for reviewing applications and making recommendations for the Environmental Recognition Awards. You know, this has been really, this is really enjoyable, especially this year. We got quite a few recommendations, or a few, quite a few applications, and it's cool to learn about all of the exciting stuff that people are doing in the city of Davis. But this will be the 28th consecutive year. We did keep that going despite the pandemic. And there will be an in-person celebration of the recipients, I think, for the past three years, tomorrow at 5:30 PM at the Peregrine School. Next slide. And then finally, something that we, that we do is just receive informational updates from experts on topics that we, that will just help us further our own understanding and be able to make more and better informed recommendations when we hear about initiatives that the city is doing. So we received a transportation update from the staff of Cool Davis. We learned more about the food recovery at Yolo Food Bank to inform our recommendations on SB 1383 in September of 2020. And then as part of, we're also trying to further our own understanding of environmental justice and make, be able to make sure that we're giving good feedback on how the city can incorporate that into its initiatives. So we heard an informational presentation about that from Professor Jonathan London here at UC Davis. And then we also learned more about climate resilience and energy from Lorenzo Kristov. Next slide. And then finally, my favorite thing so far has been that we toured the ecology facility in March. So thank you to Carrie and to everyone there for, who helped set that up. And that's also just because, you know, we touch on such a diverse set of issues, and my background's in energy, somebody else's background is in water. We don't necessarily all have the understanding we need to be able to be really helpful about issues that are outside our area of expertise. So these tours have been really helpful to understand what this looks like in Davis and be more useful to the council. Next slide. Okay, so moving forward, I know the details of this are more, there are more details about this in the work plan staff report that Carrie put together. But I'll just touch on some of our goals. I think our overarching goal still is to support an actionable, ambitious, and inclusive cap. So that's, I know we have several meetings coming up, and we'll probably be discussing that at length and just hoping to continue to provide feedback to staff that will strengthen that plan and as, when the time comes, also pass along recommendations to City Council. Support the completion of the parking lot shade guidelines that the two-by-two committee has been working on. We also have the goal to improve integration of environmental justice concerns into our planning and decision-making, and we formed a specific subcommittee around that that I think I will touch on in the next slide. Support the development of a leaf blower ordinance. I think that is, we're sort of waiting to support as needed if staff or the council decide to take action on the recommendations that were already submitted before. Promote efficient water use throughout Davis. Develop or inform a set of sustainable development guidelines. Sustainable development referring to developments in the city of Davis and kind of criteria that they could be assessed by, not to generally sustainable development as sort of like international development thing. And then finally, continue to provide input on the implementation of SB 1383 and other solid waste issues. Next slide. For our internal structure, we have, we form task-specific subcommittees and monitoring subcommittees. The monitoring subcommittees mainly have to do with what we will pay attention to or what we'll make sure to focus our time on when we receive informational reports. So for example, I'm on the Energy Subcommittee, and so when we are learning about the cap and getting updates on that, I'm really making sure that I'll have comments and feedback related to energy. And the purpose of these is also just to monitor and update everyone else on, on just kind of what's going on in Davis, and if there are any developments that the rest of the NRC should be aware of. And then the task-specific subcommittees are related more to a specific issue that we want to take action on, like I mentioned before, with the Tree Commission or the leaf blower ban. We also have formed an Environmental Justice Subcommittee. And so that Subcommittee is going to work on developing guidelines for how to assess environmental justice based off of existing examples. And we also are newly forming a transportation demand management Subcommittee that will be charged with just presenting to the rest of the NRC about kind of best practices in that area, so everyone else is up to speed and able to give good feedback. And then we also have proposed task-specific subcommittees on water efficiency and sustainable development guidelines, just to make sure that we're moving those goals forward, but those have not been formed yet. Next slide. And then I think, I believe that most of these were submitted to council, actually, before I joined the NRC. But my understanding is that these are memos based on work plans that we developed before that have been submitted. And I think we're waiting on feedback, or if there's more, if there's anything else that the City Council would like to see from us on any of those items. I think there is interest in continuing those on the NRC. But again, I wasn't here when those were submitted, so I'm not, I'm not quite as familiar with those. And next slide. Yeah, and that's, that's it for, for our presentation of what we've been up to. So we're definitely interested to hear any feedback or questions that you might have or suggestions for how you think the NRC's time could be well-spent in a way that's helpful to you all.
Sorry, trying to unmute. Okay, well, thank you for that presentation. You have certainly been busy, and there's quite a range, as you said, of items that this commission is interested in and is, you know, sort of in your wheelhouse. I'm going to see if my colleagues have any questions about the items that you've been working on currently. It doesn't look like there are any, any questions. Dan has a, Dan has a question.
Sure. First, obviously, it's been about a year since we sent you and the Tree Commission off on the two-by-two panel to resolve the issue or give us good advice on dealing with trees and solar panels and parking lots. First question is just, you indicated it's a work in progress. Are there some significant directions or takeaways that you think that you're on the same page in that two-by-two about? Do you have a general sense of where it's headed?
I can, I can respond to that, Dan, unless Richard would like to step in. Richard and, Richard McCann and John Johnston are the two main people that have participated in that two-by-two. And the, the two-by-two came up with some recommendations at the end of the year and very early this year, and then forwarded them to the two individual commissions to comment on and forward to City Council. And I believe that staff is going to be submitting that, those compiled comments very soon. So it's, it's Stan and Adrian and their team that are taking the lead on that. But the NRC did review all of the recommendations, make some very specific comments and suggestions, and have a document that states what is of the most importance to the NRC of the recommendations that were made, but I think that the NRC supports those.
Am I muted? Sorry.
Sure, and I'd welcome anybody else who would, the two participants who would like to elaborate.
Unfortunately, John's not here, and he chaired many of the, of the task force two-by-two meetings. But we actually made a lot of progress with the Tree Commission and came up with a set of interim recommendations that I think balance pretty well the, the issues of retrofitting with solar panels versus maintaining trees in existing parking lots. And we were about to move into making recommendations on new developments and new parking lots when there was some significant staff turnover that slowed down our progress. And I believe that we are going to start up again in, in the next month or two with the new staff support in terms of moving forward. So, so we do have, had made a lot of recommendations up into December, and then things got slowed down at that point.
So, Richard, just one narrow question, and I appreciate the information you just provided. So there's a two-by-two report where there was agreement on at least a certain set of ideas. Then it went off to the two commissions that, that had their own separate sets of comments. Is there any point in this process where we'll all be integrated back into a single two-by-two report that where you're in agreement on everything, or is that, is that not in the cards?
I, I can't really speak to what the Tree Commission has done, but the NRC has largely adopted what the two-by-two committee came up with. Endorsed, I should say, adopted and endorsed. I don't remember there being any significant revisions to what the two-by-two brought forward. Okay, maybe Carrie can correct me on that, but I think that we're very close, and I think that reflects, I'm expecting the Tree Commission to do much the same, largely because we really did work collaboratively with the Tree Commission members to arrive at the recommendations that we did for, for that portion.
And it's perfectly okay, in my mind, to produce a report that says, here's where we're all in agreement, and here's maybe a limited set of issues where we have a disagreement, and here's why. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, and at this phase, there wasn't that, that kind of distinction. There, if, in the next phase, when we get to new developments, there may or may not be that kind of distinction. But again, I think that what was really happened with this is that we really listened to each other quite a bit on the two sides. I think we were much farther apart six months ago, when this process was early on, and we converged on a set of recommendations, I think, that, that really help us move forward.
Okay, thank you so much.
I can, I can jump in real quick and offer that Adrian Heinecke is here with us. If you want any further elaboration from a staff perspective, she's happy to do so, if, if needed. Or if you'd like, I should say.
Sure, if Adrian would like to weigh in, that would be great.
Sure, so the current plan that we have with our recommendations that we have for retrofitting parking lots for the installation of solar panels is in process, being reviewed by staff, and that will come to council as one item with the input from both commissions that we received when the Tree Commission and the Natural Resources Commission reviewed those recommendations. And we absolutely are going to look at some of those places where those recommendations overlap and where we see consistency from the two commissions, and point out where we might have some, you know, some differences and some directions that one commission, you know, may have, and another commission may have a different idea. So we will have that discussion for council. And at the same time, we'll look at the work that's left for the two-by-two, specifically in looking at the new parking lots and the other items that were identified by council as the focus for this group. So we should be before you with that information pretty soon. Like Richard said, we have had some challenges with some of our key staff members leaving and other staff members coming in and taking over, but we are absolutely working on it, and we'll have that soon.
Thanks so much.
Go ahead, Lucas.
Thanks very much. A couple of things. Firstly, if it's, if it's possible to have the commission's work plan sort of put back up, that would be really helpful, just to sort of have that top of mind. And if, I'm not sure if that's.
I think it's back to, yeah, there it goes.
Yeah, thank you so much. Oh, yeah, that's great. I do have a quick question. I might have more based on, just after having a chance to sort of relook at this item. Thank you, first of all, so much for the work that you're all doing. I appreciate that. I think we, I'm curious, as it may, it may be part and parcel of this sort of item number six, the development and form of a set of sustainable development guidelines. But, you know, there's increasingly one item that is sort of, I would say, being looked at in a variety of jurisdictions, is the issues around sort of building codes and building regulations, especially as it relates to concrete, and knowing how much sort of emissions come from usage of, of sort of, I would say, like, more traditional concrete. And so there's definitely been some work done in various jurisdictions. Marin County, certainly, I know, has adopted a sort of new countywide building code around low-bodied concrete. And then also, I think New York State has, there's a law making its way, statewide law is making its way through the legislature there on this exact same issue. And, and, you know, basically, there's, I think, a number of other jurisdictions that are taking a hard look at some of the, sort of the building materials situation. And so I wanted to, especially as it relates to how to reduce sort of overall GHG. So I think that is something, I'm just curious if that might fit into item number six, but also if the commission has had any discussions around that specific aspect of sort of development and/or development guidelines. So be curious about that. And then also, and if, if the commission has had any recent discussion or plans to have some discussion, I think, around the issues, the sort of, it's an attached issue, which is sort of just the issues around carbon capture, utilization, and storage. I think that there's a lot of activity happening in the legislature this year, sort of a range of fronts. There's some bills dealing with pilot programs, very specific issues of some of the work that Lawrence Livermore lab has been doing. And then also, there's, I think, just a lot of interest starting, we're starting to see as part of, that may be a sort of an additional sort of tool in the toolkit, so to speak, regarding sort of the, the usage of ways to sort of have GHG reductions, but also, so I'm curious about that. And then also, actually, I'll stop there for now. I want to just curious a little bit. Well, I guess the other item would be just around the, I think, and it may be sort of a tweener between the Natural Resources Commission and the Open Space Commission, but if there's been any additional discussion or might be consideration of discussion around the issue of the utilization of the cities. You know, the city owns a lot of ag land, farmland, and so, you know, again, storage issues. I mean, you know, sort of renewal of soil is really important, obviously, but also the potential for sort of carbon storage. So just wanted to hear a little bit more from the commission about those sort of sets of topics, and really appreciate any insights you can provide. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I can, I can start, and then any other commissioners, feel free to jump in. I think that all of, I will say, first of all, I think all of those are not issues that we currently talk about. With the, we did, when we were looking at the DISC, I know we talked about, they had, we had recommended that they use building design that would minimize energy construction with the, in terms of the building envelope and maximizing passive design for lighting and heat. But we haven't talked about low-carbon concrete or pavement or building materials. And I think that, I think that would be really interesting. And I think we also haven't talked much, at least since I have been on the commission, about carbon sequestration. But I, yeah, I think we could probably look into forming a task-specific Subcommittee that's at least summarizing best practices for carbon sequestration with cement and, and with soil as well, and I think that would be really interesting. I don't have more that I could share to be useful at this meeting, but I think it's a good, I think it's a, it would be worth looking into for sure.
So this is Richard McCann. The Climate Action Plan itself, we went through and ranked a large number of measures in order to, where the city should focus its attention and where it has. order to, where the city should focus its attention and where it has probably, I would say, the biggest bang for the buck, given its limited resources. And one of the things that I think that we looked at is on carbon sequestration, that while it's a very promising area, that city only controls about 5,000 acres of ag land. And in fact, the county regulates about 400,000 acres of ag land. And we at least have discussed, and we haven't gotten to the point of recommendation, that that sort of action, the carbon sequestration, is most cost-effectively implemented by the county. This is where the city should lean on the county in order to get this sort of thing done, because the county can actually generate a lot of benefits from carbon sequestration activities in its ag lands. I worked on something for Imperial County about a year ago, and it was a substantial amount of emission reductions when you have a large extent of agricultural land. But for the city, the amount of resources that we would put into focused on 5,000 acres is not really justified compared to all of the other measures that we should probably be focusing on in the cap. Similarly, on the concrete, cement, building materials, carbon emission reductions, we don't have a lot of construction activity going on in the city at the moment, so the amount of emissions that are associated with new construction is relatively small and that there are other actions that we probably need to focus on within the cap. It's something, a measure that should be on the list of things that we do in the cap, but we really should set priorities for what are the most important measures that we need to step forward with, and then decide which ones are the things that we can put the most effort into, rather than picking a few that we might find promising. We have to look at the whole portfolio and focus on what is the most important elements of that portfolio going forward and work our way down the list, basically, to get to that point.
Great, thank you both very much. Yeah, appreciate the answers. That's very helpful, I think, especially particularly, Richard, the second item, you know, I'm thinking about the, you know, sort of, well, first of all, that sort of, you made it, made the comment a couple of times, saying just sort of this issue around biggest bang for the buck on different, some of these different actions, but also the, this talking about sort of economies of scale with, you know, 5,000 acres and the city has some control over versus, you know, quite a bit more in terms of the county level. So thanks very much. I appreciate you both for the responses.
Are there any other questions, Josh or Will, or should we go to public comment and then come back? I think we'll go to public comment. And there are no public comments for this item, so we will come back. That was quite a quick turnaround. So Will or Josh, do you want to jump in here?
I will jump in. Thank you, guys, for the presentation and for the work that you're doing, particularly tracking closely the two-by-two with the Tree Commission, which I serve as the liaison on the parking lot shade night. I gather that there probably are some points of departure between the two entities in terms of priorities, and I want to reiterate what Councilmember Carson said, that that's healthy and that's part of the deliberative process. And so I don't think we need to try to, you know, arm wrestle ourselves into consensus in order to be able to bring something useful to the city council. And then I will also say, both in this iteration, but particularly, I think some of the work that was done in the previous iteration of the DISC proposal really benefited from the work that this commission did. And there were some real benefits, in my mind, that were derived, that was particular to the work that was done here. I'm talking about the all-electric, that was something that we had pretty extensive negotiations with the project proponents on, but we were able to find a way that they were comfortable moving forward, and that was in large part a testament to the work that was done by this group. So my sincere gratitude for that type of work and for your continued work on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Go ahead, Josh.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Partita. Good evening, everyone, and I'd echo what Councilmember Arnold just said. Thank you all for your work on this commission and your time in volunteering, not just your monthly meetings, but all the subcommittees that you have going forward. I really appreciate you stepping up and serving the city in that way. A couple of quick pieces are one, I'm curious about, and just, you know, hear your thoughts in terms of, are there ways or areas in which you've identified or have thought about identifying or maybe not, ways to collaborate regionally within Yolo County with other like organizations or committees in order to move some of these pieces forward? Are there other collaborative ways that we can reach out and have conversations, you know, with Commissioner McCann, when he was just talking about with the county having that large acreage and sequestration? How do we get buy-in from folks and our neighbors to try and move some of these initiatives forward? Because obviously, these things don't happen in a vacuum, and what we do here impacts in our region, and what they do in Woodland and Winters never helps impacts globally, right? So I'm just curious around how, if this commission has talked about that and ways that we can collaborate with our neighbors to move some of these goals forward. And the second piece I would have is just, again, around outreach. It's, you know, how do we, how does this commission specifically, when you step back and look at the magnitude of what we're seeing in our world today around climate change and the impacts of the drought in California and what that looks like, how do we communicate or what role will this commission have in communicating kind of the dire situation that we are in to folks in our community and the seriousness behind it? I think this commission does a lot of great work, and there's a lot of really important issues that we're addressing and facing right now as a community. And this isn't a criticism of the commission, I'm just curious, how do we get that message out in a more efficient, productive way so that folks realize that, yeah, you know what, I shouldn't, you know, I should be checking water, I should be, you know, looking at solar, what do all those pieces are? How do we harness the energy of this commission and really try and move these pieces forward?
Yeah, thank you for those questions. I think I'll answer the first question and also maybe turn that over to Carrie, because I know that the city staff has done a lot of work talking to other cities in the county and also on the county level as they're working on the cap. Because it definitely is relevant, and it's something that we bring up often, that, for example, with issues that relate to transportation emissions, that's not a Davis issue, that also is relevant to people who are commuting in and out of Davis. Issues with housing affordability become a countywide issue, and as to issues of environmental justice, for example, with increased heat and drought impacting farm workers. And those are all kind of countywide issues that need to be thought of on that level. And we have kind of talked about that and given that feedback as we're talking about the cap, but I'm not sure, we haven't necessarily collaborated as a commission on a countywide level. So I'd be interested to hear what other people think of that as well. But Carrie, I'm not sure if you want to talk a bit more about how the Davis cap has, how you've collaborated with other, with other groups in Yolo County about that.
Well, thanks, Meg. I really want to leave the time for the commission and council to talk. I think what Meg is talking about is that there has been a lot of staff collaboration. So our cap team, Diana and I, meet with city-county collaboration in the greater region, Sacramento County and City, other cities, on a monthly basis, as well as more local meetings in Yolo County to talk about collaboration. But it is an interesting idea for the commission to explore, meeting with like groups like the Woodland Climate Committee, the Yolo County Climate Advisory Commission. Winters is setting up a commission, whether it's a commission or a committee, I'm not really sure. So there could be some cross-pollination at commission level, and perhaps that's something that the Natural Resources Commission would like to talk about at an upcoming meeting. I know we have several commissioners that are very interested in that.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And then also to respond to the question just about how to raise awareness and have more conversations about this. Off the top of my head, I think that something that has been really valuable about being on the commission has also been, at least my ability to talk about what the city is doing in a more informal way with people and just generally creating awareness that the city actually does have plans and does have, is generating the cap. I think it's really helpful for me to know about opportunities for, when there's opportunities for public comment and about the website, and I like text group chats that I'm involved in for people who are studying sustainability at Davis about that. So I think those kinds of words, word of mouth, is really useful. And also, that's been really helpful to know, not just about climate policy, but also, for example, about SB 1383 and touring ecology. And I now kind of can tell people that there are efforts to reduce organic waste and kind of know more about what the best practices for sorting waste and all of those things are. So I think just the social cohesion of people on the Natural Resources Commission, then just being able to talk about it, not necessarily through formal channels, has been great, but I would be interested to explore how we can do that more intentionally, maybe.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. I think that Lucas has a question or a comment.
Yeah, thanks. It was, I was just going to sort of, you know, add into the conversation, I think, about the question that Josh raised about sort of what, you know, we're doing in terms of collaboration with other agencies. I mean, I think that, I think in part, I think there's, in part, the answer is we're not doing much. I mean, in terms, especially as it relates to sort of climate action planning. I think that, you know, we saw the city of West Sacramento, you know, partner with the city of Sacramento and sort of do a joint planning exercise in their, in their climate planning process, right? And, you know, we saw West Sacramento choose to sort of face towards Sacramento and not the rest of Yolo. And so we're seeing the individual jurisdictions, both Yolo County, but also the cities, kind of the rest of the cities in Yolo do their own thing. And, you know, I think that that is a, you know, real lost opportunity there for us to, where we could potentially be doing something on a more, on a regional level. I do think, though, that where we're seeing some of the, where there are opportunities for additional sort of work and collaboration, or some of these existing organizations and JPAs such as Valley Clean Energy, I mean, I think that we've, you have, that's a natural place where, you know, we have each of the jurisdictions in Yolo sitting at the table, participating in figuring out on the energy side of the equation what the future is going to be in terms of local procurement and, you know, grid modernization and how to sort of, you know, we can get at some of these programs for, and really help folks incentivize how to retrofit and do a lot of electrification in the transportation sector, I mean, all of this whole suite of things. So some of that work is also happening, though, locally. So while the climate planning activities may not really be much in the way of collaboration at the moment, there is definitely, I think, work happening underway and increase them out in the years ahead with our other sort of sister agencies, vis-à-vis Valley Clean Energy is just one example. So, you know, I think, but in terms of them very specifics around that sort of climate, other climate sort of planning actions, we're really not doing, you know, there are still some silos, siloed effects going on there. But I do think the electrification of the transportation sector and the sort of grant that we've received across the jurisdictions and, you know, that each of the jurisdictions is receiving some of the CECOG dollars for purposes of installing fast chargers in various communities. I think this is just one example of where we are seeing some collaboration underway, but also I think we'll continue to see additional amounts of that, especially vis-à-vis Valley Clean Energy in the years ahead.
Thank you, Lucas. And I will also mention that Will and I are on the city-county two-by-two, and it is a conversation that we raised with the county and asked if we could look for ways to collaborate and to, you know, you know, have economies of scale around how we are implementing our climate action plans, because they're working on a climate action plan, as are we. You know, we raised the idea of not just collaborating with the county, but also finding ways that we can collaborate in our region. And, you know, it's a good example that you mentioned about West Sacramento. If we don't reach out to each other, then we miss those opportunities, and especially in something that is, you know, climate action doesn't stop at your borders. It's definitely something that we have to work on together as a region. So those are, that's good conversations to have. So if there's not any other questions or comments here, thank you for asking Councilmember Carson about the parking lot and the solar. That was, that was going to be one of my questions as well. And then the integrated pest management, I'm wondering, you know, where, you mentioned that there, you know, that was also, I think, believe, a conversation that has been stalled. And, you know, we've been struggling a bit, you know, to get somebody to lead in that area. But, you know, every time spring comes around and we see all the weeds pop up all over the place, we began to get notices from folks, you know, wondering what we are doing around that. Any comments in that, in that area?
If any other commissioners have thoughts on this, feel free to chime in. I know we have an update, we're scheduled to receive an update on the Integrated Pest Management Plan. One of our upcoming meetings is either this in April or in one of the next upcoming months. But we, I don't think we have heard anything on it for a while either. Richard, I see you unmuted. Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so my understanding is that the city still hasn't filled its IPM position yet for managing those sorts of things, and I think that's one of the critical steps to implementing that plan in order to reduce the amount of weeds, weeds that are popping up in various places. They also, the city explored using a new technology. I haven't heard anything more about it, but I'm guessing since we haven't heard anything about it, that it probably wasn't successful for use. So there's probably some other issues that the city has with trying to manage, manage the weeds.
Okay, all right. I was just, I was just curious if this commission had had any conversations around that or any thoughts on that issue? But thank you.
Madam Mayor, I can, I can comment briefly. Unfortunately, most of the current commissioners have not been involved in that issue, and it was more active in, most of the commissioners are new and were not involved in those conversations. But the commission was definitely very engaged with the new policies that came up in, I believe, 2019, and has been, has been waiting, as Richard said, for hiring an IPM manager. At this point, I believe that the staff approach is to not wait for further commission input on the Technical Advisory Committee for Integrated Pest Management, but to bring that to the commissions that are engaged with that. And we have that scheduled for May. We would have done it this April, but we had a lot of pressing items. So the meeting next week, the two key items are the very in-depth conversation about the cap and more information on the electric vehicle infrastructure, and both of those will take a significant amount of time. So I just wanted to let you know that there is interest, and the commission will be addressing this, but we're waiting for substantive information from, from staff and so that it can be a valuable conversation, and that is coming.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And then lastly, I just want to say that I was pleased to see that you have, I believe it is, is it a task force or a subcommittee on environmental justice? One of the, one of the, one of your slides.
Yeah, it was a subcommittee.
A subcommittee. And I think that that... A subcommittee. And I think that that is, um, you know, it's it's wonderful that that you have that you have that as, you know, part of your, part of your um tasks there. And I I can see that just about every issue that would come before you, you would take a a look uh through that lens and um, you know, find ways to to make sure that uh your, you know, recommendations uh include uh something around around that area. So I don't know if anybody has any final things that they would like to mention before we we go off here. I just want to say that I'm uh very grateful for the work. And as I said, there's so much of it that you're doing. You know, usually we ask folks, you know, if if there's anything that, you know, they'd really like to be doing that maybe that they're not, but I'm afraid to ask that question. Because it 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 seems that you have a very full plate already. Um, but it, as I said, if there are any, you know, final words that you or any of the commissioners would like to to say before we sign off.
Um, Kira, Jacob, or Tom, do any of you want to chime in? I know you haven't had a chance to speak yet.
I appreciate the opportunity, but nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, nothing for me either. Uh, Meg, you did an excellent job presenting what we do. Thank you.
I'm good as well. And thank you, Meg, and all of the council members today.
Yeah, Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things, or actually, one thing is just, there's I think, two or three of uh actions that we've taken that are before the council or been passed on to the council. One on um serving sustainable food options at uh at city functions. Um, another one is including the sustainability impact section in the city staff reports. And uh, and then the third is um elevating sustainability within the organizational structure of the city staff. Um, and so those are the main things that are that the NRC has passed along um that I just want to bring to your attention that the council could act on in the in the near future.
Thank you. And it looks like we now have one public commenter. So we're going to go ahead and um take that public comment. So welcome.
Hi, this is a public comment for the Natural Resources Joint Council, City Council's meeting. This is Alan Hirsch. I hope you have my slides up. On May tenth, you're going to have a hearing on the approval of a a very dense innovative apartment complexes on Olive Drive. We're consolidating four single-family homes to put a very dense forty-seven unit apartment building and waiving all the parking requirements. And this has a tremendous amount of social climate justice issues that have yet to be explored. I'm not sure this project is ready. Let me show you why. Slide two. Um, we have not thought through the park, the social implications of this thing. I know everyone wants to force, make sure the poor doesn't drive cars. But we, the parking, the 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 bus shelters are are shelter, bus stops are shelterless. There's no zipcar spaces. The bike parking is limited in the new complex. There's no place for bike parking for visitors, for example. And there's no room for bike trailers or ADA park. And they're expecting the renters to hang the bicycles by the front wheel. That's not appropriate. That doesn't meet city standards, but no one suggests these issues. Slide three. Um, again, we need to rethink our zoning building standards to accommodate bicycles. Slide four. Um, and then also, we are banning gasoline cars in the future. So all the renters need a place to charge their electric cars. And this, and slide five, um, there are many, many apartment complexes, old ones that have no place to put an electric vehicle charges. And also, there's a lack of shade trees. This is a social justice issue. Renters should be able to hold their cars just like homeowners can. Slide six. Uh, and two apartment complexes owned by the old, that are owned by the developer of the Olive Drive property are sadly in need of retrofit. And this is an opportunity to fix that problem. Slide six. Again, the May tenth hearing is a a chance to look at the intersection between climate justice and housing. We need to ha- fix an older rental, or retrofit our older apartment complexes and explore the parking, I mean, social implications of parking lot free housing. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you uh to the commenter. And I'm going to come back and see if uh my council colleagues have any final things they would like to say. And um, okay, Dan and then Lucas.
Just just quickly to point out that uh there's a great diversity of professional viewpoints on this commission and water, energy, bi- biological biological science sciences and other fields. And um, I I think this commission makeup is well suited to the rather impressive list of of projects that you're taking on.
And I just was gonna add in, I think, thank you to Richard specifically for um uh just pointing out the sort of the items that have been uh previously sort of raised by the uh commission and and sort of our, you know, pending consideration by the council. I think uh, you know, it's a good reminder. I think, you know, it's been, I mean, because of the pandemic, frankly, there's been and also a lot of turnover in the commission. There's been, it's been a while since we've had, obviously, the opportunity to have a joint meeting with the commission, but also um, uh, you know, it puts it top of mind to some of the issues that the commission has already sort of weighed in on. So um, okay, definitely will uh ra- raise some of these issues tonight in our long-range agenda at the end of our meeting. And I'm sure we'll, you know, some of my colleagues will be interested in taking on some of these items as well. And so thank you very much for that, uh, those recommendations again, and and sort of re-raising it to our, you know, top of top of mind. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Lucas. I was going to also note that um or or thank Richard for reminding us to you know, to to have those items um, you know, come sooner rather than later. You know, as you can imagine, we've been a little sidetracked the last two years. And and so now we're we're really trying to sort of get back on on um our, you know, the more normal track here. Uh, but thank you again to everyone. Thank you, Carrie, for uh, you know, your assistance. And and especially, you know, today, later on, we're going to have a ceremonial presentation for the Environmental Justice Awards. I know that that you um, you really make that happen and really make sure that that continues to, that that tradition continues to go forward. And so thank you for your help. Thank you uh um for sharing. Uh, you did a great job of uh, you know, the presentation and um, and you know, we will see you again, all, well, maybe not all of you, but we will see you all again in hopefully not too distant future. All right. And so we are going to take a small break before we continue on to the rest of our regular uh agenda. Welcome back, everyone. We are on to item two, which is, we have a number of ceremonial presentations this evening. And we are going to start with a poetry reading by our poet laureate, Julia Levine. Is Julia on?
I'm here. They they won't un- uh start, let me start my video, though. Okay.
Are you?
I think now they'll let me start my video. There we go. Hi. Hi, hi, everybody. Thank you so much for letting me be here. Um, I wanted to uh read a poem this evening because it's National Poetry Month. And also, I know you're doing these environmental awards and um there's nothing more important to me as poet laureate than um working in any way I can as a poet to help the environment and to limit Davis's uh carbon footprint. Um, I want to give a little shout out to um the Yolo Art and Ag Project um that Janice Purcell runs, where she has uh artists and photographers come out to farms all around Yolo County. And and um with her help, I've started this Plen Air poet part of the program so that poets from around Yolo County can come out and um take in these gorgeous landscapes. Um, I'm going to write a poem I wrote when I was out there, and I've picked this poem because I think that in terms of one of the most beautiful landmarks in this area is when the almond orchards blossom. And they're really all around us. They're really quite extraordinary. Nothing I've ever seen in my life except here. And because I was um allowed onto a farm, I could literally lie down underneath this almond orchard that was in Blossom. And it's a beautiful experience, uh made even more amazing by the fact that we were in the middle of this very um strange weather pattern where we weren't getting any rain at all during um January or February. Or not even much in March, actually. And so it was really um moving to see how the trees still put out all their blossoms, the bees still came. Um, this whole idea of how it's hard to stop what keeps happening in nature. And that's a pretty cool thing. Um, and there are also a bunch of crazy turkeys. And there are also a bunch of crazy turkeys out there as well. So this poem I'm going to read is sort of a meditation on that. Also, a little shout out to the people who run Healthy Davis and their brilliant idea to use plant genetics to get at COVID in Davis. So this poem is called "On the Botanical Origins of Being." "I lay underneath the almond orchard, blossoms pushing out to sky. I listened to the bees humming inside pink filaments as if the drought couldn't stop existing, coated as it was to begin again. And because I loved the ephemeral but hated brevity, if it meant I would be left behind, I thought how often hope ended badly, but that didn't mean it wasn't hope. Then the flowering orchard seemed a threshold, so there were guards, a flock of wild turkeys lurching on stilted legs between the trunks. I counted eleven males with red wattles, bluish heads, iridescent bodies, strange ushers skulking over a shadowed floor, under a dazzling canopy. In between it all, I was only myself, a latch and a gate and a going deeper in. A gust of wind shook loose the petals, as if inside the branches becoming husk and seed, all that was breaking open would not stay broken. And so I thought, I am. And shredded into white bits and falling, this life I come to believe in as enough answered, yes, you are, even you. Thank you."
Thank you. See, if we were back in person, you'd get a lot of a lot of ovation there. So thank you so much. Yes, yes, soon, very soon.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much for that. It was very meaningful. And thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. And thank you for keeping forward on Davis becoming carbon neutral. Thank you.
All right, okay. So we are on to item two B. And I apologize, I'm having a little trouble toggling. My computer is is acting a little wonky this evening. And I had I I'm waiting for these proclamations to be printed because I can't get to them electronically. So if you'll give us just a few minutes, we will move on to the ceremonial presentations. Okay, so first up, we have a proclamation recognizing April 22nd, 2022 as Earth Day. And we've got a number of proclamations here. So I am going to try to just give you the the first whereas and then give you the therefore be it resolved, if people are okay with that. Whereas April 22nd, 2022 is Earth Day, a tradition of over more than 50 years, was established in 1970 and is now recognized annually to celebrate the beauty of our planet. Recommit to actions to promote a healthy environment and maintain a peaceful, just and sustainable world. The City of Davis now fully engaged in the 2020-2040 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan update to the 2010 Climate Action and Adaptation in order to chart an ambitious, actionable and measurable course for the community's path to carbon neutrality in 2040, with interim goal setting in 2030 in support of our city and our planet. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, the city, the Davis City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Davis, do hereby proclaim that the City of Davis recognizes April 22nd, 2022 as Earth Day. We commit to protect and enhance the long-term health of the natural environment, community equity and a thriving economy by adapting, adopting and implementing the robust 2020-2040 Davis Climate Action and Adaptation Plan and integrating its policies into the upcoming general plan update. We commit to increasing local renewable energy opportunities and implementing energy conservation, advocating for and joining in climate mobilization, mitigation and adaptation efforts at the local, state, national and global levels to forging local and regional partnerships with UC Davis, other California cities and counties, local organizations, environmental professionals, businesses and citizens to accelerate the the adoption of community-wide sustainability practices and raise community awareness to demonstrating leadership through using the the observance of Earth Day as an opportunity to re-energize the innovative spirit of Davis, challenge to the community to explore new paths to sustainability and to inviting and encouraging all citizens, businesses, organizations, schools, congregations, neighborhoods and families to engage in environmentally sound practices every day. Our next proclamation is double up on solar goals. Whereas the City of Davis is now fully engaged in the 2020-2040 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan update to the 2010 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan in order to chart an ambitious, actionable and measurable course for the community's path to carbon neutrality by 2040 with interim goal setting in 2030 in support of our city and our planet. Be it resolved that we, the city, that we, the Davis City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Davis, do hereby challenge households that have the resources to move forward to adopt 100% renewable solutions, including either solar PV, choosing Valley Clean Energy Ultra Green Option for 100% Renewable Energy or purchasing an electric vehicle. All right. And then our next proclamation is recognizing April 29th as Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, Sterling J. Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And the City of Davis recognizes the contributions a healthy community forest has to clean the air and water, reduce stormwater runoff, enhance energy conservation, improve public health and safety and provide habitat for wildlife. Now, therefore, I Gloria Partita, Mayor of Davis, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2020, 2022 as Arbor Day in the City of Davis and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forests. Be it further proclaimed that I urge all citizens to plant new trees and properly care for our existing trees to help create and promote a healthy environment for the well-being of present and future generations. And then I believe this is our last proclamation, which is recognizing the 30th anniversary of Tree Davis. Whereas Tree Davis, whose founders include then-council member Lois Walk and Parks and Open Space Superintendent Bob Cordery, planted roots in Davis in 1992, and Tree Davis, together with 5,000 volunteers, have planted over 12,000 trees in Davis, parks, green belts, along city streetscapes and in open spaces. And Tree Davis has established and nurtured partnerships with the City of Davis, Parks and Community Services and Public Works Utilities, the Tree Commission and the Urban Forestry Division to involve Davis citizens in the planting and maintaining of our urban forests. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of the Davis City Council and citizens of Davis, acknowledge the work and many contributions of Tree Davis to the community and hereby recognize the 30th anniversary of the Tree Davis Organization. Okay, so that brings us to item two D, which is the Environmental Recognition Awards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for this item, for this, the summary of of this next item. I liked at the risk of putting her on the spot a little bit. I'd like to see if Carrie could please help provide us with the summary for each of these items that we're going to do recognitions for here with our environmental recognition awards. I know that the Commission, the Natural Resources Commission, has spent quite a bit of of time and and energy, so to speak, in evaluating these. And I know that Carrie has a, I think, some good insights here on on sharing the a little bit about the recipients this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, I can do that. I am just going to quickly bring up the talking points document that I had sent. And so I have to, I don't have it up on my screen. I have to get it. And I would like to acknowledge the Natural Resources Commission, who, as Meg had said, has done this for 28 years, and it's a really important and significant set of awardees that we have given awards to over the years, including especially the last three years. While we have not been able to have an in-person celebration, so we're looking forward to that celebration tomorrow. And as this slide says, we have three categories, the business, the nonprofit organization and individual group. So you can go on to the next slide, please. Eric Newman, I think, has not been able to join us today. Unless he is in the non-panelists. I don't know if you can see if he is there.
We are, we are not seeing him there.
Okay, well, he is, okay, he's in Colorado, so he may not, he may not be able to be there. But Eric Newman. Just a moment. I'm also having some technical difficulties.
I have, I I have the, I just got handed the the information on the on the recipients. Would you like me to read that?
Yes, you certainly can, or I can. I have it up as well. So I don't know if other council members would like to to speak as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to scan ahead to. Do you have a preference about who reads these things?
Go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, Eric Newman has provided a leadership role to partner with the city and steward the North Davis Channel native landscape restoration. His efforts have helped to retain and improve ecologic and aesthetic values, create habitat, curtail invasive plants and clean up trash. His ongoing work and dedication has made the channel more accessible and enjoyable to hundreds of people for recreation and environmental education. Many volunteers have joined with Eric to help with this important restoration. And although Eric is not here tonight to accept the Environmental Recognition Award in the individual category, we appreciate his work. So next slide. Also, as an individual, we have Sherry Sandberg, a Davis High School science teacher. Sherry's work shows how significantly teachers can provide influence on and relevance in students' lives. Ms. Sandberg integrates local environmental issues, resource conservation, sustainability and climate change awareness into the curriculum of her classes. She works to improve the habitat, learning environment and aesthetics of the high school campus and participates in extracurricular opportunities to further educate and involve students. Sherry is here tonight to accept the Environmental Recognition Award in the individual category.
Okay, thank you so much. I just always want to say it's just been a pleasure to work with students over the years and I I just, it's for me, it's just been just part of what makes my job so meaningful to work with young people and to see their enthusiasm for doing really positive work, both on campus at Davis High School and outside with the partnerships with landowners around our community through the SLUZ program.
So next slide. And once again, I'm just a moment, I'm trying to get back to my. Gloria, can you read the one for Elliot Larson, who is here?
Sure. Yes. Award. Okay. Yeah. So Elliot Larson is being recognized as our youth activist. It is exciting to have youth fully engaged in local environmental activism. We are pleased to recognize Elliot Larson for their leadership in the community and for their inspiration to youth and adults. Speaking up and showing up to address the severity of climate change and to influence the choices made by each of us has been Larson's mission through the work of Climate Strike Fridays. Elliot is here tonight to accept this special environmental award. Elliot?
Yes, thank you very much. This, it's, it's an honor to get this award. I, I thank everyone who was part of this very much. It is, it's hard work showing up every Friday. Climate Strike Davis and Fridays for Future were over 130 weeks. We've been at the corner of Fifth and B Street, so it's, this award is much appreciated.
Thank you and and wonderful. We're always so pleased to have our youth engaged in our community and especially around such an important topic. I think next we have our our business recipient, which is Dos Coyotes Border Cafe. Dos Coyotes Border Cafe started with a single restaurant in Davis and provides a visible and significant role model for sustainability in the community. The restaurant has made a commitment to partnerships with and support of community events, Greener Davis, Cool Davis and Farm to School. Dos Coyotes embodies a business model of sustainability through food sourcing, restaurant products, website and design that seems to be unique in the food industry. Founder Bobby Coyote is here tonight to accept the Environmental Recognition Award in the business category. Bobby?
Actually, you've got Ian Cornell on behalf of Bobby Coyote. I have the pleasure of working for Bobby and he's, thanks, he's traveling. So thank you very much, Mayor Partita and members of the City Council, and of course, Carrie and the Natural Resources Commission. As you know, I I'm looking over the list of participants in this meeting and realize that many, if not most of you know Bobby and many of you, if not most of you are also frequent customers at Dos Coyotes. We sure appreciate that. You know that Bobby has a sincere commitment to his customers, his employees and of course, the community. And I, I, he would be too humble to And I, he would be too humble to say it, but I know he surely appreciates the recognition and on behalf of all the employees and the crews at all the Dos Coyotes where he's working so hard to maintain those standards. And thank you very much.
All right, thank you. It doesn't hurt that the food's really tasty as well.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, we have our nonprofit, Davis Community Meals and Housing. Davis Community Meals and Housing is a nonprofit organization providing community meals, shelter, and other assistance to vulnerable individuals. Their work has made a huge difference for many in need in our community and has also diverted significant food waste. Davis Community Meals and Housing offers a range of services, including salvaging coffee grounds from UC Davis Coffee Shop, providing service where people in need are, and managing an extensive volunteer network. The continuing work of Davis Community Meals and Housing during the pandemic has been an important contribution and worthy of recognition. Bill Pride is here tonight to accept the Environmental Recognition Award in the nonprofit organization category. Bill?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Partita, and fellow council members and Carrie for thinking of us and nominating us for this award. You know, we've been doing business for the last 30-plus years in the City of Davis, and from my time, starting back in 1993, we've had a very intensive program, picking up food from local markets, from the Nuggets, to the Safeways, to the SaveMars, to IKEA's, also the Davis Food Co-op, and using what otherwise go into the trash, into the landfill, and using that food at our meals. And in the last number of years, our distribution network has actually expanded quite substantially with more volunteers that now go not only to St. Martin's and our meals program, but also to our Resource Center, some of our apartment complexes serving low-income and homeless individuals. And many of our volunteers also take that food and distribute it to other community members at different apartment complexes in Davis. Just want to give a cut, a little shout out to some of our great volunteers, particularly Marguerite Fleming, Mary Callan, Laura Boger, Lisa Noel, and the many others who kind of make this possible. And also to local markets who donate a lot of their food to us. It's been a great privilege to serve the community and really appreciate the thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for all the years of being such a wonderful partner in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, our, our next award, our next nonprofit award goes to Bike Davis. Bike Davis has provided an extremely valuable service in the Davis community through civic engagement, bike education, and advocacy efforts for 15 years. Their work includes infrastructure improvement, ensuring safe biking for all ages, and showing up to advocate for the long-term investment in biking for our community. They have brought resources, expertise, creativity, and innovation to increase biking and reduce transportation-related greenhouse gases in Davis. Bike Davis Director Nicholas Houtcher-Magnon is here tonight to accept the Environmental Recognition Award, the nonprofit organization category.
Thank you very much, Mayor Partita, and council members. We're really truly honored by this award. It means a lot to us. And you know, this, this organization's been doing a lot of work for the last 15 years. And really, I'm, you know, I like to say I'm standing on the shoulders of giants. There's lots of people behind, before me who've done a lot of really, really good work. And, and before us, before we're even here, the city has been working for decades before, you know, just to make this, this place a, a good place for people to bike in. We still have a lot more work to do, you know, especially when it comes to our on-street infrastructures and making our streets more welcoming and more comfortable and safe for everybody, especially those who are walking, biking, rowing, or taking transit. But yeah, it's, it's an exciting time to be here. And I think what we do is, you know, it's really hitting the, the triple bottom line of sustainability. You know, there's the environmental part, obviously, the economics, because, you know, biking is really the most affordable transportation you can think of. And then the community, because when you're, you know, biking on the streets, you're really meeting your neighbors, greeting everybody, and you're, you're here, you're connected, and you have a better sense or bigger sense of belonging. So really, that's what we're all about, you know, making our streets into a place for the community. I want to give a big thank you also to all our partners, Bike Campaign, Cool Davis, the city's Public Works Department, and all their staff. We do a lot of really good work here. The UC D Bike Program, Downtown Davis Business Association, Tree Davis, and many, many more work with us. And also, you know, all the, all the board members on Bike Davis who have been doing some really amazing work in the last few years. Peter Jacobson, Mary Engstrom, Yaukup, Sana Fittinger, Anthony Pamir, Kelsey Fortune, Daryl Dickey, and Diane Swan, and, and others, you know, lots, lots of really amazing work. So thank you to everybody for that.
Thank you for, you know, helping us make our streets safe for biking and for everyone being able to, to get around in a, in a safer manner. And then finally, our environmental, the Environmental Legacy Awards. This year's awardee is Tree Davis on its 30th anniversary. The work of Tree Davis has contributed significantly, significantly to Davis community's quality of life, environmental stewardship, and sustainability over the past 30 years. The mission of Tree Davis is to enhance and expand the urban forest by teaching the community to plant and care for trees. A wide network of dedicated volunteers have been planting, monitoring, and caring for trees in the Davis area since 1992. With over 5,000 volunteers who have planted over 12,000 new trees, also, Tree Davis has now expanded its effort to include Yolo County, Woodland, and other areas in the region, demonstrating the kind of regional integration that is highly necessary to be successful in addressing climate change. In recent years, Tree Davis has focused educational and outreach efforts on climate-ready landscapes. Throughout its 30 years, Tree Davis has sponsored free community workshops and coordinated educational programs with area schools and community groups. In the last several years, Tree Davis partnered with City of Davis to successfully receive a California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection Grant for over $500,000. The grant is enabling the city and Tree Davis to plant 1,000 new trees and to develop a 40-year urban forest management plan. Tree Davis Director Erin Donnelly is, I'm sorry, Martin New is here to accept the Environmental Legacy Award. Erin?
Thank you so much, Mayor Partita. On behalf of the whole Tree Davis team, we're so grateful for this honor. Thank you to the Natural Resources Commission. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you all, city council members, for this wonderful recognition. There's an old saying that the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, and the second best time is now. And thanks to the visionary leadership of so many of our community members in 1992, we've been able to do both. 30 years ago, Bob Cordray, Lois Wolk, Richard Harris, Robert Deering, John Mott Smith, Martha Ozenoff, and so many others came together to help the community understand not only the importance of trees, but also the importance of public nonprofit partnerships. Thanks to their visionary leadership, from mitigating the urban heat island effect and helping all of us adapt to climate change, to bringing a sense of place, peace, and well-being to this place in the Central Valley that we call home, boosting the economy, cleaning the air and the water, and bringing nature into spaces where we live, work, and play. None of this would have been possible without all of our amazing partners. Thank you so, so much to the City of Davis, to our partners at CalFire, our partners in West Sacramento and in Woodland, so many other amazing nonprofits in the area. We've got Cool Davis and Bike Davis, Poota Creek Council, Yolo Basin Foundation, too many wonderful organizations to name each one. But we're very, very grateful to all of our donors, and especially our community volunteers, who are the engine of stewardship for our public green spaces. Thank you so, so much. I would personally like to make a shout out to our current board members who are doing extraordinary service for the community. Thank you, board members. And there's one last saying that I'll leave you with, which is, "In the end, we will conserve only what we love. We love only what we understand, and we understand only what we are given the opportunity to learn." And with that in mind, Tree Davis looks forward to planting trees, growing community, and educating everyone about the importance of urban forests for another 30 years and beyond. And lastly, I want to invite everybody, everybody in Davis, we're having a big 30th anniversary party on April 30th, and we hope you all come out and party with us. Thank you so, so much for this honor.
Thank, thank, oh, am I, yes, thank you so much for those words. And I've, I'm so excited every time I see a little sapling somewhere in Davis, and I, and I know that you've been there. So thank you so much for looking out for our future and for leaving the spaces for our next generation a little better. So thank you so much to all of our awardees. Thank you, Carrie, again, for organizing this and for making sure that we continue in this tradition of, you know, honoring the, the people in our, in our community that are helping us, you know, get to those very ambitious goals of, of making sure that our greenhouse gases are where they, where they should be for, for everyone. So with that, we are at the end of our ceremonial presentation. And before we move on, can we take a really, really? Oh, I'm so sorry, public comment. Do we have public comment? Yes, okay. Welcome to the first public commenter.
Juliet Beck, and I'm calling on item two related to the ceremonial presentations and the Environmental Recognition Awards. Hello, my name is Juliet Beck, and I wish to congratulate Elliot Larson for their incredible dedication to mobilizing for a livable future for us all. Elliot exemplifies the passion and commitment of millions of young people involved in the Fridays for Our Future movement all over the world. It's been an honor striking side by side with Elliot and their family at the corner of the Fifth and B intersection in Central Park, across from the Davis Joint Unified School District and Davis City Hall for the past 132 weeks straight. Yes, 132 Fridays in a row, we've been striking as Climate Strike Davis. Elliot, you are exceptionally talented at motivating people with your words, your poetry, and your actions. Your posts to the Climate Strike Instagram, Climate Strike Davis Instagram have inspired me to go the extra mile in this movement for climate justice to keep showing up week after week. Thank you for always keeping it real and personal and sharing your hopes and fears and vulnerability with us. With all my heart and soul, I wish to congratulate you and all the other environmental award recipients. May we adults live up to the high standard you have set in organizing for a hot, healthy community and a better world. Thank you, Elliot, and congratulations. Take care.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
Hello, this is Robin Dattle, D-A-T-E-L, commenting on Agenda Item Two, the Environmental Recognition Awards. I want to congratulate Elliot Larson, in particular, on her award as a fellow climate striker. I really appreciate her tenacity in signaling the climate emergency and in organizing our, her fellow youth. Thank you and congratulations, Elliot. Bye.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
Hello, my name is George Galamba, and I'm calling about Agenda Item Two C, Proclamation Recognizing City of Davis Attaining Double Up on Solar Goals. I'd like to express my gratitude to Cool Davis for the Double Up on Solar campaign and to the Davis Vanguard for its article today. As noticed, Davis Home Solar produces over 20,000, the reduction of over 20,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide per year, and it is the equivalent of carbon sequestration of 909,000 trees. This is all good, but behind this good news is a cloud. The state's major utilities and the CPUCF, the California Public Utilities Commission, are aggressively working to reduce the viability of home solar going forward by imposing a tax on those who have solar panels and by dramatically reducing compensation for excess power production. If these efforts are successful, future growth of solar will be minimal. Thank you.
Okay, and that was our last public commenter. Thank you to all the public commenters. And then before we move on, I want to remind people that there will be a celebration of Earth Day and the, and all of the awardees tomorrow at Peregrine School at 5:30. Okay, so let's take a very brief break. Brief break. Okay, we are on to item three, A, City Manager Brief Announcements.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, City Council. A handful of announcements for you tonight. So kicking it off with the return of Picnic Day. So I know to everyone's great joy, we see after a two-year hiatus, the return of in-person Picnic Day coming up this Saturday. And, you know, we have been working diligently with our partners at UC Davis and our team to ensure that we're doing everything we can to ensure that there, the Picnic Day celebration is a safe and responsible one. Uh, so we, as a reminder, we have in place the safety enhancement zone, uh, which calls for, uh, basically, uh, increased, uh, fines for citations and so forth, uh, for, uh, a variety of, of, uh, code violations, uh, in the city, in the G graph, in a certain geographic area, basically in the central part of town, um, just depicted, uh, on the image that you see here with the, the, uh, black border. Uh, we appreciate, uh, you know, in advance, uh, everyone's efforts to keep this a family-friendly event, uh, and appreciate everyone, uh, keeping, uh, the community clean and safe, uh, respecting the law and, uh, being responsible and conscientious, uh, throughout. So, uh, truly hope everyone has a wonderful, you know, picnic day coming up here, um, uh, on campus. There is going to be a whole, uh, the whole slew of, you know, fantastic exhibits and events, um, and then in the community, I know that, uh, our, our community and our businesses and, uh, everyone is very much looking forward to, um, being out there. It should be a beautiful day as well. So, looking forward to it. Next slide, please. So, speaking of, uh, keeping our, our community beautiful, uh, we have a Make Davis Sparkle Day coming up this Sunday. Uh, so I think very appropriately timed right after picnic day. Um, so there will be, uh, this is a, a day of, you know, of, uh, basically volunteering, uh, in our community, uh, to make Davis sparkle. It's coordinated with, uh, our Chamber of Commerce, our, uh, city of Davis, our Davis Police Department, uh, and the volunteers are encouraged to come on out. Uh, the meeting will be at the Bicycle Hall of Fame at three oh three Third Street. And, uh, from eight, uh, eight to ten A M., so meet up, uh, at, starting at, uh, eight A M. Uh, and just, you know, bring friends and, uh, help, help out with, uh, making, uh, uh, making Davis, uh, beautiful. So we appreciate everyone's partnership on that. Next slide. Uh, very proud and pleased to announce the opening, um, I'll call it a soft opening of the Pole Line Olive Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Connection. Uh, the project which has been under construction for less, uh, many months, uh, just parallel to Interstate eighty, uh, towards the east end of Olive Drive is now open, uh, and it is, uh, uh, functioning perfectly and the lights are on and, uh, everything is working, working quite well. This is a project, just as we'll talk about a little bit later this evening, uh, had significant, uh, grant funds, uh, that were, uh, were obtained with this, by the city, uh, to pursue this connection and it, uh, provides very important, uh, point of connectivity, uh, with Olive Drive, uh, neighborhood, uh, to shopping, to services, to schools, uh, and, um, uh, provide safe, uh, safe, uh, access uh, up to Pole Line and all, all the way down to, to all Drive there. So, we will do a, uh, a grand opening ceremony. Uh, we were planning that, uh, but for right now, it, it was ready to be opened and we didn't want to wait a moment longer, uh, to get it open as people were chomping at the bit. So glad to see it open now. Uh, next slide. Speaking of grand openings, we have a couple more to announce here. We have, uh, two new playgrounds, uh, replacements that have just, uh, reopened, uh, both at Senden and Ueva Park and La Playa Park, uh, brand new, uh, tot lot, uh, at La Playa and then a new, uh, play structure and play, play equipment at Senden and Ueva. Uh, so those are now open and, uh, in use and they're looking beautiful. And it thanks to the neighborhoods out there for their input on, uh, on these, uh, designs. And thanks to our staff team for, uh, pulling together the construction of them and getting them open just in time for this great weather. All right, and then, uh, coming up, we have, uh, May is Bike Month and we're kicking that off with Lupulusa. So, on Sunday, May first, uh, from ten A M. to two P M. is the Lupulusa, which is, uh, basically, it's sponsored by the, uh, day, city of, uh, city of Davis, Bike Davis and the Bike Campaign. Uh, and it's, uh, the twelve-mile, uh, Davis Bike Loop, uh, that is, goes through parks, green belts, the UC Davis Campus, uh, and it's kicks off our celebration of May is Bike Month. There's eleven stations along that route that are going to be set up with various, uh, information, uh, prizes, there's going to be, uh, marching band. It's, it's a fantastic event. If you haven't done it before, strongly encourage doing it, um, this year again. Hopefully, uh, keeping fingers crossed that the weather is, weather is great, uh, and looking forward to seeing everyone out there. All right, and then, uh, last item that I have for you this evening is, uh, an update on the, uh, La Rue and Anderson and Russell, uh, intersection. We do have a traffic light that is out of commission at that intersection. There was a vehicle accident, um, I believe it was yesterday, uh, at that intersection that took out one of the signal poles. And so the signal, uh, pole is, is out of service. It's currently, uh, the, in a four-way stop configuration at that intersection. As most folks know, that's a fairly busy, heavily traveled intersection. We are really encouraging folks to just be very cautious. You have patience, uh, navigating that. Our team, our public works team, uh, in, in coordination with our police department, uh, is assessing all the options and developing a, uh, plan to get that intersection back into signal, signalized operation, uh, as soon as possible. We are working diligently to get that done, uh, by, by Friday, uh, by the end of the day, Friday, if at all possible, but we do have a backup plan. Uh, if, uh, if that does not get completed as expected, we do have a backup plan of having, uh, traffic flaggers, uh, out to help do traffic control, uh, at that intersection on picnic day. We are also in communication with, uh, our partners at UC Davis, uh, to make sure that they're aware of this, uh, and we have resources at the ready, uh, to manage it, both now and moving forward through the picnic day weekend. Um, so hats off to our team for pulling out all the stops, no pun intended, uh, to, uh, get this fixed, at least a temporary fix in order, uh, while we await the longer-term fix, which may take a bit more time. So, uh, appreciate everyone's patience and please be safe out at that intersection. That's my announcements tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those, uh, announcements, Mike. I'm super excited about the, um, Olive Drive connection. My family and I, um, been passing it and been waiting, uh, patiently for it to open and you forgot to mention that it's also a connection to In-N-Out, which is what my grandson is, is really waiting for. Um, so with that, we will move on to city council brief announcements and liaison reports. Are there any announcements from anybody? Uh, three, the city council indication of intent to pull items from the consent under. Nobody, no takers on that? All right. So, uh, then we will move on to item four, which is public comment. And, uh, this is for any items that are not on the regular agenda, uh, or items that are part of the consent, uh, calendar. And I want to take this opportunity to remind people that, uh, public comments, um, should be related to the business of the, of, of the council and what we are, what we are working on here tonight. And I know that it's election season and people get, uh, pretty, you know, passionate about the things that, that they are, uh, campaigning for. But if, uh, possible, I encourage people to please, uh, limit public comments to the, uh, to the work that is, uh, part of the, of, of the city here. Okay, so, why wait? I see Lucas's hand.
I just wanted to say one quick item, which is I, I will probably have a comment or so, maybe one or two on it. Um, um, one or two of the consent calendar items, but not, no needing to pull them. So just want to make a quick, brief comment. Thank you. We won't, when that, when the appropriate time later, yeah.
Okay, when that, um, just before, or, or just after we pass consent? Is that okay? Okay. Great. And so welcome to our first public commenter.
This is Connor Forman, speaking on item four, general public comment. So with the city's likely move to in-person meetings again soon, I just have a few things I wanted to say around that. So first off, I think having hybrid options is important going forward for accessibility reasons, both related to and beyond COVID. So I hope there will be remote options for all future meetings, both for watching them and for providing public comment. And then in terms of watching meetings remotely, I will note that prior to the Zoom meetings during COVID, I had various issues with lag and such using the city streaming service. So I do wonder if there's a way to improve that. And then I also, uh, wanted to say that I support comments made by Todd at a recent planning commission meeting around remote public comments and continued items. So I think that if there is an option for a meeting to record comments ahead of time, which I do think should be an option, at least for some meetings, but if that option exists and someone records a comment for an item that is later continued to a future meeting, I think that that person should have the opportunity, if they want, to use that already recorded comment for that item in that future meeting. And then finally, I wanted to say that I also agree with Alan Hirsch's comments around the need to make the remote aspect of meetings more inclusive. And I think we should try to consider ways to do that and to replicate as well as possible the atmosphere of an in-person meeting, uh, while simultaneously.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
Hi, this is for general public comment. What is going on in this town? Mayor's putting misleading advertisements in the paper that claim to set the record straight, but then go on to make completely baseless claims like DISC will, quote, produce STEM internship opportunities for high school and college students, end quote, when not a single company is committed to the project, let alone a company that might actually have a meaningful internship opportunity. What is going on in this town when I see misleading yes on measure H signs around town that say all kinds of things like green belts, affordable housing and fix the climate crisis? All kinds of empty promises, but no mention whatsoever of the massive industrial complex the developer actually wants to build. What is going on in this town when a council person claims a poorly planned last-century industrial complex will, quote, save the planet literally, end quote? What is going on when a city council person talks over the mayor in order to make a purely political presentation from up on your dais? What is going on in this town that the rest of the city council sits by and says nothing when another member attempts to use a lawsuit to suppress collected, protected political speech? Thank God he lost and lost badly, but really, what is going on in this town? When did the developers start calling the shots? When did ethical government go out the window? What happened to this town I love?
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
This is Roberta Billstein, speaking on item four for general public comment. At the city council's meeting, uh, for, Councilmember Carson took the unprecedented step of making an approximately three-minute statement, boozing his lawsuit against eight citizens who signed no on this ballot argument. This statement, Councilmember Carson, that is, has been funded by the Yes On H campaign, which is almost entirely, if not completely funded by the DISC developer, Ramco Enterprises. Dan Ramos himself also spoke earlier during the public comment and admitted to funding the lawsuit. Then on April tenth, the Davis Enterprise published a graphic with the title, From the Desk of Mayor Gloria Partita. But upon closer inspection, the letter from Mayor Partita's desk was acting as an ad that was and Ramco Enterprises. These council member actions concerning the DISC project have brought to the surface a number of ethical issues, revealing a lack of clarity in what constitutes appropriate city process. I ask that the city council address the following questions. Are council members allowed to use stop sign for items not on the agenda, particularly for issues that are of direct personal relevance to them? Should council members take developer money for lawsuits they would like to file or ads they would like to run? Is it appropriate for the lines to be blurred between a council member's elected role and their advocacy on path to the developer? Are there any limitations on topics for general public comment? If there is any doubt about whether to allow a citizen comment, should the city err on the side of allowing it in order to adhere to the principles of free speech? I urge you to place these items and answer these questions on your agenda as possible. Thank you.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
Hi, I would like to compliment the city council for recognizing Elliot Larson, uh, with the environmental recognition award. That's fantastic. Um, I, and, uh, sorry, I didn't mention this before, but my name is Scott Stewart. I am also calling, uh, at public comment to, uh, recognize that, uh, it is not, uh, in our interest to stifle the expression of, um, publicly, uh, uh, allotted measures, no on H or yes on H. Uh, the suit that was sponsored by our city council member, Dan Carson, was entirely inappropriate. It was a, uh, dangerous precedent and it should not be, uh, allowed. It should be something that this city condones officially. I ask the city council to, uh, make a statement concerning this kind of activity as it is a, uh, has every appearance of a strategic lawsuit against public participation. Slap suits are illegal and there's a reason for that. If it costs you eleven thousand dollars to express your opinion and to run a campaign, um, that is a publicly issued campaign, uh, that is absolutely abhorrent. So, um, Dan Carson owes us an apology as residents of Davis. Thank you.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
General public comment. Good evening, city council. I'd like to speak to the ongoing conflict of interest Councilmember Carson has regarding his self-proclaimed role in the Yes on Measure H campaign. Councilmember Carson has very publicly placed himself at the center of the formal legal effort to gain voter approval of both Measure H and the DISC industrial project. In addition to serving as the honorary chair of the Yes on H Campaign Committee, Councilmember Carson has also been the petitioner in a lawsuit that is funded by developer Dan Ramos and names Davis citizens as defendants. These clear conflicts of interest beg the question, can Carson continue to participate in any Davis City Council discussion of DISC? Either at the subcommittee or council level as a whole. Uh, an additional question is whether Carson can play any role in ongoing negotiations with Yolo County. The, the negotiations over tax rate with Yolo County are of particular concern. On November sixth, the county sent a very strongly worded letter to the city of Davis and it would seem Davis has done little or nothing to address the county's formally submitted concerns regarding the DISC project. To date, the city and county have not come to an agreement on the pass-through percentage of any taxes should the DISC project be approved. That means any projections of any tax benefit to the city of Davis are entirely speculative until it is determined what the pass-through percentage will be. Without the county's request being met, the county will likely see a need to increase the county's percentage as opposed to other projects in the recent past. There are just more impacts from DISC on the county and so it makes sense the county will want more. It is questionable whether Carson can continue to wear the dual hat of representing both the city of Davis and the Yes on H Campaign Committee. If I were in your shoes as a sitting member of city council, I would be seeking a total recusal from Dan Carson from all things DISC and I would be reaching out to the rest of the council to support that action. Thank you.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
Hi, this is for agenda item four. My name's John Whitehead, a Davis resident. A recent event in my neighborhood last week gives us a new and surprising reminder to distance our world even farther from fireplaces and woodstoves, leftover technology from the nineteenth century and earlier. A family was displaced after their fireplace started burning the wall of their house. Actually, it was one of those modern chimneys that consists of a metal tube running vertically inside a wooden structure. Many such chimneys have been built in recent decades. Many such chimneys have been built in recent decades, presumably after someone decided that brick chimneys are outdated. But they were too slow to figure out that it is also outdated to burn fires and ruin the air with toxic smoke. I spoke to a passerby who smelled the smoke and assumed that it was just someone's fireplace doing its usual thing. Luckily, a different neighbor called the fire department shortly thereafter. The residents were not home. Last Wednesday, April 13, our local newspaper reported the Monday fire. Another recent piece in The Enterprise said that the city council decided five years ago to stop using Roundup Weed Killer on city property. So there is an example of the bias that something that comes in a bottle can be a toxic chemical, but somehow, smoke is just a smell. Now in the summer, we will have dry weeds all over town, yet another fire hazard. Considering the neighbor's fire was so close to my place, the fire hazard of dry landscaping gives me something to think about along with our need to conserve water. No easy answers. Thanks for appreciating my comments.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
Hello, this is Matt Williams, giving general public comment. I have submitted to council and to staff in writing four questions concerning the information available to the voting public regarding Measure H. I have received a reply email from Sherry Metzger stating, "Thank you for your inquiry to the DISC 2022 project. I will need to check with city staff to determine what we would need to do to respond to your questions. We will get back to you." I would hope that the council would provide leadership in making sure that goal is achieved by staff. Thank you for that. The four questions are: First, how are the 11,284 net new daily vehicle trips distributed through the 24 hours of a typical day? Second, the PM peak hour outbound net new vehicle trips in the traffic study only account for 35% of the EPS reported total of 2,335 new employees, which begs the question, how are the remaining 65% getting to work? In the study, the third question, it shows, the study shows that 22% of the peak hour trips go to a location in Davis. 23% could be in Davis, but also could be beyond the Davis city limits. 34% go east on Interstate 80, and 22% go west on 80. Is that the expected distribution of DISC employees used for the purposes of commute distances and GHG calculations? And finally, the EPS report reports that only 187 of the project residents will live in the project. The project employees will live in the project. That means-
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
This is Alan Prior, speaking for public comments as a principal officer on behalf of the No on Measure H campaign and co-author of the ballot statement that was challenged by Dan Carson via a lawsuit he brought against me and the five signers of the No on Measure H's initial campaign statement. We learned at the last city council meeting that Dan Ramos funded Carson's lawsuit against these same six Davis citizens in an attempt to make extensive changes to the No on DISC argument against Measure H. That lawsuit alone was an unprecedented step for a sitting city council member to take. In court documents filed late yesterday, we learned that Carson intends to go after these same six Davis citizens in court again. Carson said he intends to ask the court to order these citizens who signed the ballot statements against Measure H to pay his attorney's fees, even though his lawsuit seeking to water down their No on H ballot argument was largely unsuccessful. Carson is demanding fees despite the fact that Dan Ramos, the developer behind the Measure H DISC project, has already admitted publicly that he footed the bill for Carson's lawsuit. The legal fees to defend and defeat Carson's attack on our free speech already zeroed out the No on H campaign bank accounts. Now Carson is trying to collect his attorney's fees from me and the other ballot signers personally? Wow. It's already clear that this developer-backed lawsuit is having a stifling effect on Davis's long tradition of engaged citizen participation. Who will want to sign a ballot statement in the future if a developer can fund a punitive lawsuit against them and potentially get these citizens to foot the developer's legal bills? Carson's lawsuit sets a terrible precedent. I urge every member of this city council to disavow these deep-pocket attacks on our local democracy and to seriously consider the propriety of a sitting city council member of colluding with a developer to take such steps. Thank you.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
Hi, this is Rick Keller, and I'm calling on Agenda Item Four, general public comment. I hope I am allowed to speak freely now without worrying about whether councilmember will sue me or try to go against years of established precedent and disparage me after I've had my allotted two minutes. I want to talk tonight about what it takes to have a robust democracy. Here in Davis, to have a robust democracy, what we need more than anything is new candidates to come forward for the November election. The time to file papers is right around the corner, so now is the time to make a choice to serve the city. Districts One and Four will be up for election for the first time. District One is everything west of Highway 113 and some of the apartments and dorms around Oxford Circle. District Four is everything north of I-80 and east of Pauline Road. What does it take? Well, it takes two things above all else: willingness to dedicate significant time at low pay to have an amazing city and a commitment to being an honest broker. Being an ethical and honest broker, above all else, is the top requirement for a new candidate to come forward. Someone who will take in information, listen to all types of citizens, and genuinely do their best to the city. Davis needs this so badly right now, it makes my stomach turn. If you are like me, and you don't appreciate some of the actions of the current council, I urge you to get together with your friends and family and start talking about who will run for council. Let's restore ethics and decency in Davis by having good candidates come forward and stand for election. The next councilperson could be you.
And that is our last public comment. Thank you to all the public commenters. And so I will bring it back to council so that we can move the consent calendar, get a motion to move the consent calendar.
So moved, Arnold.
Second, my Frericks.
Okay, Councilmember Carson?
Carson, aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Myself, aye, by my Frericks.
I, and I still would like to make a comment on the council itself. Thank you. Go ahead.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Okay, and the consent calendar is moved. Go ahead, Lucas.
And thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment on Item F, which is the item around sort of mobile food vendors and such. I think that it's, you know, we are basically with this action coming into ordinance, or coming into compliance rather with state law. And I think that is important. There's definitely a larger conversation for us to have at some point, especially as it relates to the issues around, you know, food trucks and, you know, being operated in directly adjacent, you know, outside of some of the bricks and mortar establishments in town. So to completely understand that issue, but I think that it's really important that we, that we make sure that we are trying to always be in compliance with state law. And so really appreciate the change here in this sort of update to the city's ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lucas. Thanks for pointing that out. Right, now we are on to the regular calendar, and we want to item six.
Okay, so thank you very much, Madam Mayor, City Council. So this item before you tonight is our annual Community Development Block Grant, or CDPG, and home funding actions. We have recommendations and recommendations for an annual action plan. And this is a matter that has been before the Social Services Commission, and the recommendations before you incorporate their input to the council. So I'm going to turn things over to Kelly Stackwitz to provide a very brief summary of what's before you, and then we'll certainly be available for questions. Kelly?
So, thank you. We can actually go to the next slide, because I think Mike covered that. So as Mike mentioned, this process, it is a process. It's a year-long process. It started last fall with a review and approval of a critical needs list and followed by a very thorough process to request proposals. And the Social Services Commission has been instrumental in providing their expertise at every step along the way. This, these particular grants are the Community Development Block Grant, which we call CDPG, and the Home Investment Partnership, which we call HOME. And this is the, both of these grants are for low-income individuals and to assist with affordable housing and public access to facilities. So the city receives a formulaic allocation each year. We have not yet received our allocation amounts for '22, '23, which is the conversation we're having right now. So the discussions and the recommendations tonight are based on estimates. We are estimating $775,000 in CDPG funding and $375,000 in home funding. So on this slide, CDPG is divided into three funding areas: public service, public facilities, and then administration. Public service is limited to 15% of the total grant. And this year, the city actually received less than that amount, to about $116,000, we estimate, in requests, which is an unusual position for us to be in. The requests that we received are on this chart. You can see they total about $94,000. All of these organizations have received CDPG funding before and all are recommended for their full funding request. When taken together, these different organizations do provide a wide spectrum of needs and assistance to low-income individuals. Next slide, please. So if the council concurs with the staff and the commission's recommendation in the previous slide, then there would be approximately $22,000 of funds eligible for public service that are not allocated. So the council can determine if it wants to try to allocate those funds at this point in time and how it wants to allocate those funds, whether on public service or public facilities or some sort of split. The commission recommended allocating these dollars to public service specifically to a program that would assist extremely low-income households, but they did not designate a specific organization or a specific program. That was just their interest in having it funded in that to cover those particular types of needs. Next slide, please. The next category is public facilities and public access. These funds usually, they fund rehabilitation work for affordable housing projects and city ADA improvements in parks, facilities, and streets and sidewalks. In this category, we have four projects or programs recommended for funding. Basera Plaza, which serves low-income residents with disabilities, and this is to replace their HVAC systems and water heaters. And then Yolo Community Care Continuum's Farmhouse, which serves individuals with mental illness, and this is to replace flooring and make some other repairs related to that. And then the latter two requests are both city requests. Parks and Community Services does regular ADA improvements to parks and play areas. And then Public Works does their flatwork projects, which does funds ADA improvements to sidewalks, crosswalks, streets, et cetera. The commission and staff recommend the full amount for Basera and YCCC's Farmhouse, and then a reduced amount is recommended for the city projects, not because there was anything wrong with the proposal, just because of the, that was what the remaining funding would allow. Next slide. The city is also limited to 20% of the grant to pay for administrative costs. These include our fair housing services that we provide, the monitoring and the technical assistance to current grantees, and then also monitoring of past grantees, which we're required to do. So the recommendation is to fully fund the 20%. Next slide. So our home process was interesting this year. We received two proposals, one for Adult Day Health and one for the Farmhouse. The Farmhouse, we just discussed. We really felt it was a better fit for CDPG, and we moved it to that particular funding source. For Adult Day Health, as you may recall from our conversation on the American Rescue Plan funds, Adult Day Health had some changes in their project and some uncertainties. So for this particular proposal or this particular funding source, they just asked to withdraw their proposal or put it on hold for the time being. And then council has tentatively allocated the American Rescue Plan funding to them. So we are not, at this point in time, recommending home dollars for that project. So that leaves us with only the administrative costs, which is as a 10% cap. Much like CDPG, we are required to monitor both current and past grantees. So any property that has home funding in it, we have monitoring requirements that we have to follow. So even if we don't have any current projects, we still have monitoring responsibilities. Next slide, please. So tonight's action, we're asking you to hold a public hearing and take any comments or input. We're asking you to provide any additional direction regarding any of the funding recommendations and then ultimately approve the resolution for the funding recommendations and also authorizing the submittal of the annual action plan to HUD at the close of the comment period. And the action plan outlines whatever the funding recommendations and our plans for the upcoming year. So that was it. I will do my best to answer questions or provide any other information.
Any questions from my colleagues? Dan?
And Kelly, please answer briefly. Is, does it make any sense to allocate any of these monies to pay the deficit we've been dealing with for Pacifico, for the operating costs? My recollection, but it may be wrong, is that we've been using some general fund to support that effort, but my memory could be wrong on that.
So for Pacifico, we can use either CDPG or HOME for rehabilitation costs to the facility. We could use the public service dollars if we wanted to pay for some of the operating costs, but we'd be limited to using just that amount because the CDPG isn't going to allow for, funding isn't going to allow for paying just regular operating costs of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Josh?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Partita. So just to follow up on that same line of questioning. So could the $21,850 that's not allocated currently, could that be used for, at Pacifico, for the improvements that we have coming up?
So the $21,000 and change dollars in public service could be used for, to offset operating costs at Pacifico. The remaining dollars for CDPG or for HOME could be used for the rehab work on the facility, if that makes sense.
Yes, that's, yeah. Thank you.
Can I just also add to that? The $21,200 doesn't have to be used for public service. It can be used really for anything, any eligible expense, other than the administration. So.
Anyone else? No. Okay, I had a question. So the improvements for ADA, they have to go into an affordable housing unit? Is that, is that correct?
No, not necessarily. So often, often they will, that is often something that an affordable housing developer or property owner may want to do. But the ADA improvements, we, the city, use them frequently or mostly for our parks, our crosswalks, audible signals, improvements, ADA-related improvements to our public facilities and things of that nature. So it's a bit broader than just affordable housing.
So I'm asking because I've had, you know, citizens inquire sometimes about ADA improvement- So I'm, I'm asking because I've, uh, had, uh, uh, you know, citizens inquire sometimes about ADA improvements to, um, you know, apartments where they live. And, uh, you know, some of those places are, um, not, uh, they're inclusion, they've got inclusionary housing. They don't have, it's not a, a, uh, big A affordable unit. So what are the, the parameters around that?
We would have to show that the money that was spent from these funding sources went to units that were specifically, um, usually income-qualified for low income, so 80% or, or lower. Uh, so if it's just, if it's a market rate, um, up development and, and there weren't any requirements around it, that it just happened to be little A affordable, then, um, that, that really is eligible.
Okay, thank you. Um, so if there are no more clarifying questions from my colleagues, I will open this public hearing. And I understand that there are no, uh, comments on this, so I will close this public hearing. And bring it back to, uh, council if there are any, uh, closing remarks here or any, any more, uh, conversation that people want to have. Dan?
Yeah, I would just, uh, I think we're not requiring motions or any specific actions here. What I thought I heard staff ask for was general direction. And I guess I'd like to have them look at the possibilities here of moving the ball on, a little bit on Pacifico, um, either on the operating side, um, or, um, on the, uh, repair side. But, um, there is, I realize there's a lot of moving parts in relates, in relationship to this issue. And I don't wanna inadvertently stumble, so I would just say, um, you, you know, examine that possibility, uh, a little more closely and see if anything makes sense.
Yeah, as far as action tonight, I would recommend that the council take an action to adopt the, uh, to, uh, adopt the resolution that's in your packet, which, uh, provides for the recommendations for the initial funding. And I believe, uh, if there was council consensus, uh, along those lines, Councilmember Carson, then, uh, the, adopting that resolution would not preclude staff from, uh, doing just that, is my understanding. Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Lucas? So we, uh, I'm sorry, really quickly. So we could, uh, adopt the recommendations and then make a separate motion?
Uh, yeah, you wouldn't even need to make a motion necessarily if the council just had consensus that you wanted to direct staff to take a further look at that. Um, uh, you could, you could formulate that into a more formal action and motion if you, if you, uh, preferred.
Okay, great. Lucas?
Yes, thanks so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, um, very much, um, Kelly, for the presentation. I just, I have a quick question with regard, so I, I, uh, looking, so I scrolled through the staff report. So I'm looking at pages 14 is one page that I want. And then, sorry, the chart again, so on page eight. So I, I think you've had the same chart up as was slide. Um, I am curious about, so in the, in the CDPG public facilities, um, category, the Basera Plaza item, is that the same as the St. John's property in, no? Okay, so I, I'm looking at the, the item for it, uh, i- in the staff report on page 14. And it's, I'm just not identi- I apologize, I'm not really identifying where, uh, where that location is, so I, I apologize.
Um, and I don't have the staff report in front of me, so.
That's fine.
The, uh, Basera Plaza is a development in South Davis. And it's a fairly small, um, development, but it, uh, it serves low-income individuals with disabilities. Um, many of them have mobility disabilities, but not all.
It, could someone just give me the location of that facility? I just, I guess I'm not familiar with it, and I apologize.
It's on, it's on Cowell, excuse me, right across from Willow Creek Park where the Dave Pell's, um, crossing comes down. There's the apartments right there beside it, if you come over the overpass.
Okay, so what was used to be known as the Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence Center?
It's, you, you can turn into it off La Vida, like across from Mary.
Again, yeah, just asking. So is it, I mean, it was, what, which, what, which once was the?
Oh, I don't know.
No?
It, it's separate from that.
Okay. I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I didn't realize that, so my apologies. Um, and so then the dollars that, so we had, obviously had the discussion previously, and I saw on that slide around, um, about St. John's. I, I'm just curious about the Adult Day Healthcare item, you know, since there was a, just an announcement that the county is considering, um, the possibility of, uh, purchasing that, uh, facility. Um, I know that there has been, uh, per this slide in front of us, project placed on hold, ARP funding considered. There has been now, it looks like some movement in this project. So just since the dollar amounts were the same, I was, I was sort of confused there. So I wanted to make sure that we are just still, uh, I don't know if that's a future discussion in terms of the, the sort of reserve dollars that the council has set aside for ARP funding. But if that, essentially, if we know that that request is still, uh, there from Adult Day Healthcare, I, I, and just wanting to sort of a little bit more detail about that. Thank you.
Sure. So for this particular proposal, um, uh, Dawn Myers asked to withdraw the proposal that Adult Day Health had for the, the home request. Um, so we, we did that. She didn't ask to withdraw it for the, um, ARP dollars, so we did not. Uh, there has been movement in that project, um, as you just noted. And if council would like us to, um, tentatively look at using these dollars or some amount of the home dollars for Adult Day Health based on where that project is going to land, we can do that. Um, at the time we put all of this together, we, well, based on the information we had at the time we put it together, it would been, it would have been a stretch to pay for with home funds. Um, if they have a solid owner and in the county, um, then that would work for using home funds, um, we believe. So it's, it's up to council if you want us to look at switching funding sources and use HOME rather than ARP. Um, or if you want us to wait.
Thank you. Yeah, so thanks. I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I think for me personally, I find with the direct, you know, the recommendation coming from the Social Services Commission and it's sort of, and the sort of staff combo that you, we have this evening. And I think that, you know, we, there'll be more, probably more details coming in the months ahead uh, with regard to the Adult Day Healthcare, uh, proposal and what, um, the needs might be, um, whether it's 150,000 or in a minimum amount, or 225,000 amount requested, or potentially more. And thankfully, there's, um, you know, this reserve that has been created, so with ARP funds. So, um, there'll be opportunity for discussion about something like that in the future. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I can, Councilmember Vice Mayor Ferricks, I would just want to reinforce, I think that the line of logic here, I think, makes sense to, to keep that on hold, just given how much is up in the air right now with respect to the disposition of that property and, and so forth. And, um, uh, we'll want to stay in close communication with the county around this and with, uh, you know, Adult Day Health, uh, program. Uh, and also keep careful tabs in terms of the timing of, uh, any, any funding requests that may come forward. Be, should be the timing of, uh, tide that's associated with ARP funds and also with CDPG or, or home funds in this case. Um, and, uh, just be careful to be, being cautious that we don't get too close to the finish line and then, um, uh, find ourselves, uh, not being able to, to take an action, uh, that the council may wish to, uh, uptake. But we'll stay in close communication with the county on that.
Thank you. Um, Will?
Thanks. I was gonna go ahead and, um, make sure that the item did get moved. Uh, I don't, well, I'll wait for a second if there's one.
Okay, my first.
Thanks. Uh, I'm, I'm, uh, in concurrence with, uh, the points that are being made by my, uh, colleagues. But, uh, I, I don't think any of that is precluded, uh, by the action that, uh, staff is recommending tonight. So that's why I'm comfortable making the motion. Thanks.
But Josh?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I agree with you there, Will. I think, you know, keeping options open around, around the Adult Day Center and, um, and the possibility of plugging some of these funds or, or keeping the options open around, um, some of the ADA work, um, related to Pacifico or other issues that are happening, um, there as we move that, that forward. Um, just keeping all those options on the table as we have those discussions. I think that's what, uh, Mike was talking about. I'm comfortable with that. And I definitely agree that it's precluded from us moving this forward. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion in a second. And I don't know if, uh, people want to make any other comments at this point? Or we go ahead and, uh, we'll go ahead and vote on this. Um, Councilmember Carson?
Carson, aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Um, Vice Mayor Ferricks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
And that, uh, passes. Kelly, thank you so much for, um, presenting this item and answering our questions as, uh, aptly as you always do. And, um, and, uh, you know, we do a lot of good with, uh, the, with these funds and serves a lot of people. And so thank you very much. Um, that moves us now to item seven.
Good evening, council. Uh, tonight, we're here to present on, uh, Davis Police Department equipment, uh, and a change to, to state law, which requires the police department to have use policies for any items that are deemed military equipment and to have council pass by ordinance, um, approval of the, the use policies and, uh, user acquisition of equipment. Excellent. So real quickly, uh, this is a result of AB 481, and state legislature passed this late last year and was signed by the governor. And so the, the, or, uh, law does a couple of things. Um, the first thing is, is that it requires a law enforcement agency to obtain approval by their city council, in the case of a city, um, for the purchase raising funds for acquiring, uh, items that are deemed military equipment as defined under the, the state law. And also to have that use policy for military equipment and collaborating with other law enforcement, enforcement agencies in the deployment or use of military equipment within our jurisdiction. So tonight, uh, staff is recommending that we adopt findings pursuant to state law, um, and introduce, uh, an ordinance adopting the military equipment, uh, use policy by the, the department. And then secondarily, to request the PAC to provide an annual review of the equipment labeled as military equipment, starting in 2020, 23, and provide, uh, advisory input to the city council each year. Next slide. So real quickly, um, the, but the, the use policy in state law defines what military equipment is. And realize the use policy that was submitted with the staff report, uh, and we'll briefly go over a couple of the items in there. Um, it lists a lot of, of types of equipment that the department doesn't have and, and a lot of cases would never have really a need for. Uh, but because state law defines them, they're in the policy, so that there's, you know, kind of, uh, some real clear guidance on, on what it is that we're allowed to have versus, uh, not, or what requires council approval versus what doesn't. So, uh, it includes, but is not limited to unmanned aerial or ground vehicles. So for example, aerial drones, um, the Bob disposal robot, which council has previously approved as surveillance technology, because it has some surveillance technique on it, that is now also military equipment. Um, so in some cases, some of this stuff has to comply with both the, uh, now military equipment, uh, use policies and ordinance, and also the surveillance technology ordinance. The armored vehicle that council has previously approved is, uh, military equipment. And the state law lists several other types of vehicles, um, that are armored vehicles that are military equipment. Impact munitions or kinetic energy projectiles, uh, are now deemed military equipment. Chemical agents such as tear gas and smoke canisters, uh, rifles, and then breaching tools, which are used to open locked doors or, or barricaded doors. So each one of these things is a, is a type of military equipment. Now importantly, even though state law defines these things as military equipment, uh, most of these things actually aren't really used by the military in a, in a typical military fashion. A lot of them are specially made for law enforcement and actually don't really have a military application. But, uh, nevertheless, the, the state has now defined them as military equipment. Next slide, please. So real quickly, we'll go through some of the, the items that we have that are listed in the staff report, um, just so that it's really clear what council is, uh, approving tonight in our use policies. So we have the armored rescue vehicle, and it provides ballistic protection. Uh, council previously authorized the, the purchase and use of, of the vehicle in 2019. Um, it has been used in a couple of SWAT deployments. Uh, really early on, right after we got, got the vehicle, we actually used it with our SWAT team in West Sacramento, where a suspect was actually shooting at the West SAC armored vehicle. Uh, luckily, we didn't, uh, take any rounds near our vehicle or personnel, but it was there when, when an incident was used. We've also used it in just a couple of, uh, high-risk search warrant applications, uh, with known armed offenders or illegal firearms, a couple of cases involving automatic weapons. Uh, and I have a picture of the, the actual vehicle that we purchased and, and have here. Next slide, please. We also have chemical agent, smoke canisters, and impact munitions and launchers for those devices. They're primarily used by the SWAT team, um, and, uh, they're a less-than-lethal option or air denial tool. So real quickly, um, you know, the chemical agents can be used in a variety of applications. Uh, and like I said, for kind of a SWAT tool, they're primarily designed to either get people to exit without us having to enter, uh, to deny people going to certain areas. So in other words, if you, if you, um, use, uh, chemical agents, they may not go into an area that we don't want them to go into. Um, and then they do have application in riots or civil disobedience. However, in separate legislative action, uh, starting January 1, law enforcement's been, uh, kind of strictly limited on the, the types of civil disobedience and the rules for using, uh, these items in, in those particular cases. So I listed those out separately in the staff report so that council, um, would have kind of a clear understanding of now what the use of force policies are and what the state law guidance is now, uh, and requirements for using these tools. The impact munitions are carried by, uh, patrol officers and, and vehicles. Um, they're a really safe and effective, uh, means of, uh, shooting with these direct impact munitions. I have a picture of one of them, um, out of a 40-millimeter launcher. And, you know, basically use these, uh, instead of having to use lethal force, you know, in situations where, um, you know, being able to impact a person from a, a good distance in a safe and reliable way can cause them to surrender or drop items or, um, otherwise be taken into custody. So, um, they have some application, actually, that's the primary applic- application for the device. Uh, next slide, please. We also have rifles, um, and, uh, they're just guns that have significantly greater accuracy over a longer distance than a pistol. Um, you know, most people, you know, that, I think they have an understanding that, uh, you know, handguns can be used accurately for, you know, some great distance, and it's simply not true. Um, you know, even at 20 yards, you have a significant reduction in accuracy where a rifle has, you know, greater accuracy for a longer period of time, which means that we don't necessarily have to get close to a person, an armed person or an armed situation, um, and are able to, you know, be back some distance and still able to provide, uh, cover when, when it's necessary. The, the bulk of the rifles are used by the patrol officers, and each officer has a rifle that's assigned to them. And then certain rifles are used by the SWAT team and have some different or special applications for them. They also have breaching tools, and those are, there's a couple of different varieties, but primarily shotgun devices that shoot rounds that look like shotguns but aren't lethal rounds. Uh, they're really designed to defeat locks, um, and, uh, you know, be able to quickly enter a door without having to use like a battering ram or to kick it in, you know, what you, you know, kind of the, the way that you see it done on TV is, you know, you use your foot and kick it in, but that doesn't really happen in real life that way. So having these types of tools are a better way to do that. Next slide. All right, so under the, the state law provision, council has to make certain findings in, in order to approve the, the use, uh, policy by ordinance. And the military equipment is necessary because there's no reasonable alternative that can achieve the same objective of officer and civilian safety. The proposed, uh, policy will safeguard the public's welfare, civil rights, and civil liberties. If purchasing the equipment, um, it's at a reasonable cost. And tonight, uh, you know, and on this provision, all of the items that we're asking for, uh, for approval to continue to use, um, the department already has. We're not asking for any new, uh, tools. the department already has. We're not asking for any new tools or equipment at this time. And if we ever want to purchase new tools or equipment, just like the surveillance technology ordinance, we would have to notice the public first for 30 days and then come to council to seek approval for that. So tonight, we're really just asking for council to approve the ongoing use of equipment that we had prior to January 1 of this year. And that any prior military equipment use complied with the military equipment use policy, it was in effect. We didn't have a policy in effect at the time. However, we have had use of force policies that have covered or other policies that have covered all those equipment since we've actually had it or been using it or had it available. And we haven't had any policy violations for, for any of these types of items. So these are the, the special findings that council has to make. If you recall, for surveillance technology, there's very similar findings that you have to make for approval of those items. So it's kind of the same type of, of direction here. Excellent. And state law also provides that we have to have an annual review. So a couple of things. And again, you know, just like we do for surveillance technology, we can have council directors to work with the PAC each year as we put together our annual reports. They can provide council input. And then we are required to submit an annual military equipment report to the city council and we have to reauthorize use. And so this is the exact same procedure that we have to use every year for surveillance technology and continued use. We have to make the reports available on our website, just as we have to make the use policy available on the website. And then within 30 days of submitting our report, we also have to hold at least one well-publicized and conveniently located community engagement meeting where the public can ask us questions or talk about the, the military equipment. So there's both the 30-day requirement here. And then you notice in the policy, state law also says that if anybody at any time asks a question, we have to respond within a reasonable period of time and answer their questions. Next slide, please. So again, these are the staff recommendations that we covered on the, the back of the first slide and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Darren. Any questions? Counsel? Dan?
I, I have raised this question earlier with staff, but just to put it on the record, the, the way that this policy works is that, as I understand it, and, and I'd ask the chief to please correct me if I'm not stating it correctly. But if there's a reason they have to go out of policy for a situation that happens, there's an obligation to report it to, that information to us. The current policy says, or does, I think it says that that would be at the time of the annual report. And the question I've asked is, if this isn't a very frequent occurrence, could we have those reports, you know, in some earlier timeframe? If it's, if it was something that was a regular occurrence, I could see the point of an annual report being the silver repository. But anyway, if, if chief, if you could respond to that.
Yeah. So it, it does say that and we can easily modify the, the policy tonight as, as part of the council hearing to have it a, a reduced time. The, the circumstances that we would need to, to acquire equipment, you know, through excellent, excellent circumstances. I mean, you, you're talking about a really unique or potentially catastrophic event. So I'm not really that concerned with, you know, as long as it's a reasonable period of time, you know, maybe 60 or 90 days having to report to council, you know, and, and then if we acquired it, we actually have to go through the regular process of noticing the public and providing 30 days notice to the public and then getting it on a, a council meeting and then having council approve it by ordinance anyway. So it requires a first reading and a second. So, you know, if, if it's within that kind of 90-day time period, it provides time to do all of that. And I don't think that's a problem at all.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to save my question for after public comment. And we do have a public commenter. So welcome.
This is Connor Gorman speaking on item seven, the police equipment item. So I very much support having the Police Accountability Commission review the use of military-style equipment in Davis by the Davis Police Department once a year. I think that's very much in their purview. But I also think they should play a much larger role in the beginning of this process as well in the writing of the ordinance as well as the discussions around it. I think they would be very helpful in that matter. And relatedly, I also wonder if there might be a role here for the independent police auditor as well. And then also somewhat relatedly, I question the role that the police department played in writing the initial ordinance here. And I think that the initial drafting of this ordinance should be done independently of the police department itself. And then I also wanted to mention that the staff report discusses how a lot of this type of equipment is regularly used by police agencies around the country. But that is not an argument against this being militaristic equipment. In fact, that demonstrates once again that policing is designed primarily not for safety, but to maintain an oppressive status quo. And in fact, some people make an analogy, especially in certain areas, around policing being an occupying force. And this is just another example of why we need to move away from policing and toward community-centered public safety.
And that is our public comment on this item. And so we'll bring it back to Council Lucas.
I know that you may have a actual question, you think you said, Madam Mayor, but I was just going to move the item and I do have a couple of quick comments. Thanks.
Okay.
I will second it.
Okay. Great. So Darren, my question is around the, the policy. I know that what we are approving is I on that, on that policy letter I, which is down at the bottom, which is the list of the equipment that we currently have at the police department. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, you're actually approving the entire policy, but yes, the item I is the equipment that we specifically have and whatever he's most interested in.
So the, so I guess it makes me a little uneasy because the, the first half of that policy has a list of like all the possible equipment, but we're not saying that we approve use of all of that equipment. What we're saying is that we are approving the use of the equipment that we currently have.
Yes, that's absolutely correct. The military equipment is defined both by state law and it's in our definition section of the policy so that it's very clear to department staff what it is that we have to seek council approval to, to use or acquire. So again, this is kind of a restatement of the law, but this, you're not approving the items as defined as military equipment. You're simply being asked to approve the items that are already listed in section I that the department has. And, and, you know, if at some time in the future I need to come back to council and say, hey, you know, here's another piece of, of, of equipment that we need and it falls on that list. You know, I have to go through the same noticing process and have to come before council with the same type of presentation as tonight and ask for, you know, a new ordinance that, that actually approves that, that item. So but you're not, you're not approving the use of all of those items that are on there.
Sure. And that's, that's how, that's how I understand it in the staff report. But it, you know, there's, there's two parts. It's the, it's the ordinance part and then there's the policy, you know, part. And I guess I, I would have liked for the wording to be a little clearer around what it is exactly in that policy that we are sort of approving. And I don't know, you know, if, if you specifically put in something that says, you know, we are approving line I or item I in this, in this policy is, is what the city council explicitly has approved for use. And anything else, you know, we have to come back for. And I know that, that staff report, you know, says that, but then when you get to the policy, it's not, it's not as clearly written.
Yeah. So for, I can easily modify both the ordinance and the policy so that it's crystal clear. And I believe I can, we can do that and have that submitted as the, as part of the second reading that's required.
Okay, that would be great.
That's no problem.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, could I propose the same approach? If you go to page 712 of the city staff report, about three or four paragraphs from the bottom is a sentence that says, "All instances of non-compliance will be reported to city council via the annual military equipment report." Or what I'm proposing, we substitute is within 90 days as, instead of via the annual military equipment report.
I would accept that friendly amendment. I would accept both of those friendly amendments.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any last, anyone else?
Yeah, just to, well, just, I don't know, additional questions, but a quick comment. I mean, I'm, I think I'm the only, only member of the council left who served on the city council when the MRAP was acquired back in the day. And that talked about the issues you don't think will come up as sort of potential city council agenda items. I do appreciate firstly, you know, I recognize that the legislature can, you know, sometimes the laws that are passed by the legislature, you know, can sort of put our local governments in a bit of a bind and, and trying to figure out how we comply with them and such. So I totally understand that. But I do appreciate this sort of update to state law. And I think it's, I really appreciate the way the chief has approached this and DPD has approached this. I think that making sure that, I think there are definitely types of equipment that are useful tools and can be, and yet can be needed certainly. And so I think that that is certainly appropriate, both tools and roles for the usage of those tools. But I also think that it's very important for us to have a policy like this in place. Because I think, I think back on that situation a number of years ago. And I think one of the big challenges that we face as a community was that it was acquired sort of, you know, I would say without a lot of transparency. And so I think that, that the MRAP was acquired at that point with a lot of, without a lot of transparency. And so it caught the community by surprise. There were a lot of other issues associated with it. But I think that was a fundamental sort of underlying issue that there was not any kind of, any community discussion or real engagement at all about sort of the usage and need for a tool like that. So, or a military vehicle like that. So I definitely recognize and, you know, the, sort of the feelings that members of the community had, including myself, when, you know, voted to sort of send the MRAP packing at the time. Because I think it was not the right choice for our community. But then as we see, as chief outlined earlier in his report, you know, just a few years later, this, the city, you know, new version, newer version of the city council, a different makeup of members, voted to approve the acquisition of an armored vehicle and they voted for that too. So I definitely think there's appropriate need and usage of such tools. But I really appreciate us adopting a policy like this. And of course, again, I talked about earlier this evening, coming into compliance with state law. But I really appreciate us adopting a policy like this. And I also think it's pretty important that we do have the, much like we've had the Police Accountability Commission providing an annual review of other types of surveillance technology and other things that we, the ordinances we've adopted. I think it's a very appropriate role for the Police Accountability Commission in this case as well. And appreciate the suggested amendments by my colleagues as well. And thanks for letting me make a couple of quick comments.
Thank you, Lucas. Anyone else? No? Okay. Yes, I will add my, my thanks to Darren for, for putting this together. And I know that it's, you know, the change is, is difficult and you've been a partner in, in helping us move, you know, along in, in making our, you know, police department more of a community, you know, a, a community department. And, and I'm very appreciative of that. And, and so I, I look forward to us continuing along the, this path. And are we ready here? Councilmember Carson?
Carson, aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Vice Mayor Ferricks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Can we take another brief break before item eight, before we finish? All right, welcome back. We're now on to item eight, citywide grants.
Right. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, City Council. So this, it's this time of year, each year we come to the city council and provide an update on our grant endeavors from the prior year. And that is part of what brings us here before you this evening is to provide that update on our last year of grant activity, which has been substantial. And we are also here to present to you as an informational item, our comprehensive funding plan update. We do a three-year, what I basically refer to as a rolling plan that helps us to anticipate and plan ahead for grant opportunities and to align those grant opportunities with city goals and objectives. So with us this evening, we have our intrepid grant team that they're a real pleasure to work with. And we have Doggo Fieros from our, our office, our city manager's office or management analyst. And then we have from Consero Solutions, we have Jennifer McKenzie and Petraia Marchand, who are grant consultants. And so they will provide you with an overview tonight. So I'll kick it over to Doggo to start with, and then Doggo will kick it over to our consultant team. And then after that, we'll be happy to entertain any council questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Portilla Vice Mayor, Ferricks and councilmembers. Tonight I bring forth a pre, an update on the citywide grants for the past year. Next slide. In 2017, the city began to strategically inventory its citywide grants. Part of the strategy was to create a document where staff can keep track of each department's grant activity. That was a priority goal of the city manager's office, more specifically. So part of the grant activity that is being tracked is current grant applications, awarded grants, grants not awarded, and completed projects that use a grant funding. In the past five years, the city has been awarded approximately $35 million in grants, mostly planning and implementation type grants. But most importantly, one, one thing to note that most of the grants that we have received in the past five years have been competitive grants. So staff and our consultants have worked together to put great grant applications. Next slide. Much of our grant successes cannot be done alone. Since 2015, the city has contracted grant writing assistants and research services with Consero Solutions. Consero Solutions has assisted city staff in all the various stages of grant of a grant. So starting with initial research through awarding and the closing of a grant. And Consero Solutions has worked with staff to develop and implement the city's comprehensive funding plan, which is a living document that keeps track of priority projects in the future for each city department and matches the projects with the best possible grant opportunities in the, in the horizon. Next slide. In calendar year 2021, the city received approximately $8.9 million in competitive grant funding for projects that were listed in the comprehensive funding plan. One of the project, one of the grant awards that, some of the grant awards that I like to highlight is just over $3 million for the Anderson Road and Chavez Elementary Complete Streets Improvements. Almost $2.8 million in the Central Park Revitalization and Interactive Water Feature Project. Just over 1.8 million for the H Street Pathway and Parking Improvements Phase Two. 166,000 for the Hotel Emergency Shelter Program for individuals experiencing homelessness. When we pivoted out of the, the emergency winter shelter at the Davis Migrant Center. One of the other grants that I like to highlight is just over 88,000 for equipment upgrades at, at Veterans Memorial Theater. Those upgrades were very necessary as a lot of our systems were outdated or have been outdated. City has also received an unprecedented amount in federal funding through the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act, roughly 22 and a half million dollars. Much of these funds have been allocated for the community's most vulnerable members. Although the CARES Act and American Rescue Plan Act funding are noncompetitive, they have greatly complemented our successful grant applications that are available through the competitive process. Next slide. With that, I'll pass it along to our partners at Consero Solutions, Petraia Marchand and Jennifer McKenzie, who will present about the update, updated comprehensive funding plan for 2022 through 2025.
Good evening, Mayor Portilla, members of the council, Petraia Marchand, President Consero Solutions. Thank you, Doggo, for the introduction. I just wanted to start off my very brief remarks with a reminder of how unprecedented this time is when it comes to state and federal funding. It's truly historic in terms of how much money is actually available from the state and federal government over the next three to five years to leverage local funds. And in my professional career, I really honestly have never seen so much money available. And I've been tracking state and federal funds for almost 20 years. And so the combination of the record-breaking state surpluses and the federal stimulus measures have resulted in huge investments larger than I've ever seen in some of these competitive grant programs that the city has been so successful in applying to. So the other item of note related to this unprecedented funding is that this funding is going to last for multiple years. So this comprehensive funding plan that you're receiving an update on tonight, which covers three full years, is really just the beginning of your opportunity to secure additional funding because this funding is going to be given out over a number of years. And I also just wanted to compliment you and your staff for taking the time to invest in product development and prioritization. If you didn't think it had already paid off for you, it's about to pay off even more. Because unlike many local jurisdictions, you're very organized. And so you are going to have an opportunity to make sure that you are leveraging state and federal funds for the projects that mean the most to the city and the community. So if you go to the next slide. This comprehensive funding plan is a streamlined one. You guys are a victim of your own success in some ways and that your, your staff are busy implementing projects. And so that takes away from the ability to apply for new projects. So over these next three years, you've got 16 really, some of the best projects honestly I've seen in the time that I have been working with you matched up with 16 different grant opportunities. This is building over on the city's success that Doggo mentioned to secure $35 million in grants over the last five years. Doggo got to mention a couple of his favorite grants. I'm going to mention a couple of mine too. All the Olive Drive pedestrian crossing. Honestly, that would not have happened without the good work of your staff to identify a disadvantaged community that was in need of a pedestrian crossing. That was the only place in Davis that was eligible for funding. And without this process, I don't think the city would have secured those funds. And then my other favorite is the Urban Forestry Grant with a thousand trees or more that have been planted around town with little tags that everybody sees. So you're going to have more opportunities over these next three years to implement more projects like that, both high-profile ones and ones that the residents, you know, will not see as publicly. I also wanted to remind you that the comprehensive funding plan is a living document, and that has never been more true than it is today with so many new funding opportunities. As many of you know who track the state budget, there is money in the state budget that doesn't even have a grant program associated with it yet. So as your priorities change and, and new funding opportunities emerge, we will be working with Mike, Kelly and Doggo to update the plan with new projects. And as always, we double and triple check the council priorities to make sure that what we are putting in the comprehensive funding plan is consistent with those priorities as well. Next slide. I wanted to briefly mention a couple of new features of this plan that haven't been part of previous plans. The first is projects under development. And the second is grant tracking. So projects under development are projects that are important to the city, but they are not yet developed enough to match with grant opportunities. So an example of that is the project to update the 2017 Strategic Plan to Guide the Arts and Cultural Affairs Program and a project to enhance public spaces, which, you know, includes a number of different sites around the city, but none of those have been developed to the level where you could apply for a grant. So those are projects that were included in the plan because they're under development, but they are not yet matched with an opportunity. A second new feature is grant tracking. And this is also an important new category because it allows us to include grant opportunities in which the city is interested, but does not yet have a priority project. An example of that is climate action funding. So you are on the verge of completing your climate action plan. And there is dozens of climate action grant opportunities, but you haven't finished the plan yet or prioritized your projects. So we're tracking those funding opportunities so that we're ready when that plan is done. Next slide. Just also a brief reminder of how we developed all of these projects that are in the plan. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. First, we work with staff. We move every single department. It's a pretty long process, but it's also a really interesting one to identify and develop projects and compare those projects to council priorities. And we then research funding opportunities that match those projects. We develop the plan that you have before you tonight. And then after tonight, we will be tracking all of the grants that are in the plan and meeting with Mike, Kelly and Doggo monthly to discuss what grants are coming up over the next six to nine months and make sure that city staff are prepared for it and decide whether or not to apply. Then there's obviously the application process. And then finally, and most importantly, because you're doing a lot of that right now, actually managing the grants and implementing the projects. And as you know, that can take up many years to do in some cases. And then you see the fruits of your labor with projects like the pedestrian crossing, crossing on Olive Drive. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the plan or the process.
Thank you. Thank you both for that presentation. And it's, you know, very inspiring to see the projects and the success of the grant. So I'll see if there are any questions from my colleagues.
Not questions, Mayor, but a couple of comments later.
Okay. Let me make sure I can see everybody here. Okay, are there, I don't see any other questions. So I'm going to see if there's any public comment. There is no public comment. So we will come back to council here.
Yeah, thanks very much, Madam Mayor. A quick question for Petraia and/or the team or Doggo or the team from Consero. I think, you know, really appreciate the update and sort of the outlining of, of the various sort of items that we have, you know, applied for that obviously are all things that fit within, you know, various aspects of city, existing city goals. Are there, especially considering the amount of resources that are out there, both at the state level, but also the federal level right now, I think, especially at the state though. You, you know, you referenced in your presentation earlier, this issue of there are even dollars that are sort of being put into the state budget that don't even yet sort of have official programs set up in place for them yet. So I mean, are there items that you all would suggest to us that we should be sort of, you know, attempting to go after that might not currently sit within sort of like any, you know, identified sort of existing city goal, right? I appreciate, you know, any, any sort of items that you might, you know, either you've all thought of or, you know, opportunities that I think are might be out there that we sort of might not have a full awareness of yet. So curious about your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I have some general, general ideas and specific comments. But before I answer Mike or Doggo, did you want to answer the question first or do you want me to start?
Go ahead, Petra. Thanks.
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that I do think there is, first of all, I'll look to you, Petra, to respond to that in terms of state budget and what maybe is looming out there as, as to potential grant opportunities that are not form-related yet by the state, but may be coming and the potential alignment there. There's also a tie-in, I think, to be considered for your next agenda item, which is the legislative platform for us to be thinking about too, just to, to be thinking, you know, strategically about what we're looking at at the state legislative level. Some of those items that are in the legislative platform, you know, don't necessarily tie it directly to council goals per se, but they're definitely things that we're tracking. So those are just a couple of preliminary thoughts, but Petra, let me turn it over to you for further feedback.
Yeah, sure. So first of all, just give you a broad answer in terms of the process. So when we meet monthly with Mike and then that your, your comment is underscoring it or your question is underscoring it is we do bring up grant programs where the state is asking local governments to do things and you may not have thought of it yet, right? So we are making sure to bring those to Mike and to say, hey, the state really is pushing local governments to do these types of things. Are you interested? And I will say, this is the first time we've done this with the city because there's never been so much money before, right? And, and, you know, I think Kelly's listening here. Kelly and I have talked about it. And it's like, this is a, I never recommend chasing grants, but this is the first time where we've said, maybe we should do a little grant chasing this time around because there's just so much money, right? So so normally I don't recommend that, but we are going to be more actively tracking funding opportunities that the city had might not have thought of as a result of this unprecedented level of funding. And I'll give you a specific example of one I just brought to, to Mike the other day, which is the state wants to, to fund climate resilience centers, right? So the reason why I brought it up was because you have some city buildings that need to be upgraded for various reasons. And, you know, whether it's energy efficiency or some other type of of upgrade, right? So the question becomes then that we talked to Mike about is, does the city want a climate resilience center, right? That wasn't in your council priorities, right? But that's a discussion that we'll then turn over to staff to have as to whether there's a need. So I really appreciate the question and we will definitely going forward, you know, make sure to continue to bring those opportunities to, to Mike so that it can be further discussed.
And that's in Petra, that's a great example because that is something that has come up more recently in our climate action plan discussions, in discussions and recommendations coming from our Natural Resources Commission. And then more recently with the city council action to allocate some ARP funds towards, towards precisely that. And if we are able to identify grant opportunities that can, you know, supply more flexible ARP dollars, for example, you know, then we may want to do that and/or be able to just extend those dollars further and then do more with them. So that's definitely, that's a great example, Petra. Thanks.
And I would also add, I know that you as council members are always hearing new things too. So it really should go both ways, like feed information to Mike that he can give to me so that, you know, we're making sure to identify any opportunities that we may not have seen, you know, the first time around.
Thanks so much. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think especially as it relates explicitly to the climate resilience hubs, I, I think that that is a it's a good example, I think, of something that is not sort of, hasn't been explicitly, you know, initiated in our sort of it's a good example, I think, of something that is not sort of, hasn't been explicitly, you know, uh, initiated in our sort of uh, cities' goals, but I think at the same time, you know, as Mike said, it's come up in a variety of ways over the past, course of the past few months or the course of the past year, I uh, utilities commission also has been raising that particular issue. And so, you know, I appreciate that we were able to put some of the ARP dollars towards uh, proposal like this, but I think that the potential for sort of state action on it is going to be pretty great. I think additionally, I would just quickly say, I think it's really important. I know that a lot of agencies, the state certainly, but you know, obviously really look up, look favorably upon sort of collaborations with other agencies, like if there's, you know, sort of more skin in the game, so to speak. I think in the case of the climate resilience hubs, I think it's uh, having a conversation with Valley Clean Energy, I think is pretty mu- is definitely something that should be done soon. Uh, because one of the issues, especially as it relates to climate resilience hub, if the, if the city ends up uh, pursuing sort of a location, we'll just say either either, you know, senior center, senior community center or the Veterans Memorial Center, either way. You know, one of the key components of a resilience hub is basically this option of having uh, sort of a microgrid essentially. So, I mean, some sort of like, you know, solar and battery storage. And so, you know, instead of the city sort of reinventing the wheel and do this on its own, this, I think it's a perfect example of where there could be collaborations with Valley Clean Energy to uh, put forward uh, sort of the creation of a local um, microgrid from, you know, utilizing a BCE's expertise uh, in uh, sort of creation of sort of a solar and sort of battery, battery storage hub. Thanks.
Thank you, Lucas. Dan?
Uh, so these two items I got to mention are actually covered in our legislative platform, which is the separate next item. But I, as as it was discussed by uh, Petraia, this is a living document. And we're three weeks away for uh, according to our long-term calendar, unless there's a delay, of course, of bringing up the Reimagine Russell Plan. And so that's one area where uh, you know, around about it, Arlington and Russell would be nice, but there's actually a number of very important safety improvements stretching along Russell all the way from City Hall to the edge of the city and beyond. Um, and so if we reach a a a final consensus on that plan in a few weeks, um, that's certainly an area where I think in collaboration with UC Davis, they have expressed to me an interest in co-applying for things, uh, which strengthens our hand in, as as Lucas knows very well from the transportation grant making game, uh, it's it strengthens your hand in going after resources when you're being collaborative in that way. Um, and then it's probably a few more months down the line, but um, our downtown plan, which is also referenced in our our legislative platform, uh, the infrastructure, a lot of that. Uh, some of those major components could fit within active transportation program grants. We're trying to de-conflict pedestrians and bicyclists and automobiles in our downtown. And there's some great ideas uh, in that draft plan that would uh, move us in that direction. And uh, and we've already got rough estimates of the money we need. We've already put a little ARP money uh, into the the downtown plan. Uh, even before it's been adopted essentially. So um, I would, of course, let's keep an eye closely on what we do here at City Hall on moving those things forward. But I think those then, you know, are are possibilities for integration into this living document. Thank you.
And I would agree, those are great examples of the importance of maintaining this as a living document. Both of those, I was just reviewing an agenda that Jen McKenzie put together for Mike for two days from now, and both of those plans are on it to ask the status because that's what we're trying to do. So that's exactly the type of communication we need and um, I know we're wrapping up here, so I did just want to do a quick shout out because Jen McKenzie on my staff was not part of this presentation. I'm doing all the talking. She did all the work. She was really excellent. So if you see her around town, please thank her because she's really a star. So wanted to make sure to do a shout out to her.
Thank you all. Thank you Petraia and Jennifer and Doggo for all your your hard work on this. And I'll give a shout out to Kelly as well. Uh, I'm sure who is far too humble uh, to self-acknowledge her her uh, tremendous role in in this grant process as well. Uh, but also a shout out to our department head team uh, for uh, being such good uh, participants uh, and stakeholders in uh, development of this plan. So thank you to a big team effort on this.
All right. Yes, and I will add my thanks as well. Uh, as I said, this is uh, super inspiring and uh, it just makes me really proud that uh, that we're just so smart here. That we, you know, we've uh, been able to to do this very strategically and and thank you uh, for all all your work and for the guidance uh, that's that's, you know, made this so successful. And this is uh, informational, so there's not anything else that we need to do here except for be very appreciative.
Yeah, that's correct. In turn, no action required. It's informational update and um, we will uh, keep reports coming on when we uh, secure grant uh, opportunities and as adjustments uh, come up that uh, uh, some of which we were just talking about, you know, we'll certainly keep council apprised of those efforts. So thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Now we're on to item nine, which is our legislative platform report.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Council. Uh, so this evening, what we have uh, coming before you is a uh, report and recommendations coming from our legislative subcommittee, which is Vice Mayor Farrick and Councilmember Carson. Uh, and um, uh, this is something that we do each year with council and we've done it uh, for the last, uh, I think since 2018. Uh, we started more formally putting together legislative platforms uh, to uh, coalesce and help us organize around issues of importance that we want to make sure that we're advocating uh, for uh, as a city. And um, we, so I, as far as the format here tonight, I'm going to provide an overview of the proposed legislative platform uh, for 2022. And then I will turn over to our subcommittee to have them uh, add any additional remarks that they may wish to add. Uh, then we can, of course, go to council questions, public comment uh, and deliberations. So the uh, I I first want to start with uh, the uh, first slide here. Thank you. Uh, is um, take a moment to acknowledge some of the more notable uh, results uh, of activities that we worked on in 2021. Uh, that resulted in benefits to the city. So we received almost $20 million in uh, direct funding via the American Rescue Plan Act, of course, the ARP uh, funds. There's been uh, some very recent attention to and council action on. Uh, we also received um, uh, direct funding of approximately $2.8 million that was described just previously uh, to construct the splash pad uh, in Central Park along with uh, your improved irrigation systems and structures in the park uh, that you heard about it in the previous uh, grant agenda item. That also involves uh, really uh, sort of shaking the trees a little bit in terms of legislative um, efforts and discussions as well. Uh, to create the opportunity for us to be able to apply for that grant in the first place. We also advocated for funding uh, to improve traffic issues on the Yellow Causeway uh, via I- I-80 uh, in Caltrans uh, and supported statewide funding to assist with diverting edible foods from foods from landfills. Uh, the next slide, there we go. Thank you. One of the first areas we want to pay attention to is infrastructure. And specifically, we want to track and advocate for bills and funding from recent federal infrastructure legislation and the 2122 adopted state budget uh, that address funding for infrastructure needs. Uh, this may range from maintenance of local streets and bike paths, uh, new transportation infrastructure to address traffic safety concerns and encourage active transportation. And we also want to continue to support um, ACA one uh, two that is being put forward by some assembly member, uh, Cecilia Aguirre Curry uh, to lower the necessary voter threshold to approve revenues for affordable housing and public infrastructure uh, projects. So that was another key um, uh, key endeavor in terms of the association with infrastructure in the state budget. On the next slide, we have two items to bring forward that are centering around Interstate 80. Um, and first, we want to remain engaged in supporting Caltrans efforts to implement the Yolo I-80 corridor improvement project. Um, which is an $86 million uh, award of fed- federal funds, infra grant uh, that received quite a bit of uh, notoriety last year. Um, but additional resources would be helpful to implement the full vision of a multimodal approach to transportation solutions along that corridor. Uh, second, we want to continue to support efforts to secure state funding to address flooding issues that occur near the Child's Off-Ramp in the Vicfazio Wildlife Area uh, in that vicinity. It's an area that's, you know, been uh, plagued for years with flooding challenges and issues. Uh, and so that's a a key area that we want to be uh, paying attention to in partnership uh, with Yellow County. So on the next slide, thank you, uh, we are recommending um, in a, an opposition position uh, to the Taxpayer Protection and Accountability Act, which is now being circulated for the November 2022 ballot. It would impose additional restrictions on the city's ability to levy tax and fee revenues needed for the support of critical public services like police and fire protection. And the platform recommends continued monitoring of sales tax legislation related to internet sales to ensure Davis receives its fair share of sales tax collected. So a couple of key um, tax uh, measures that we want to be uh, tracking here. Uh, on the next slide, uh, the platform also includes three items that relate directly to climate and the environment. Uh, water conservation support, uh, supportive initiatives that would assist the city in meeting our climate action adaptation plan goals, such as support of SB 852 uh, by uh, Bill Dodd uh, and uh, to create uh, climate resilience districts and funding to assist with implementation of SB 1383 uh, which addresses diversion of edible food from landfills amongst other uh, key initiatives. Uh, finally, supporting Valley Clean Energy, uh, which provides uh, clean electricity options to to Davis and to Yellow County more broadly. And that includes a support for SB 612 uh, in the proposed platform. Next slide. Uh, finally, the housing, um, uh, housing is another uh, critical area uh, that we are paying close attention to uh, and is included in the platform. Factors uh, including uh, continuing to advocate for Davis's needs uh, related to the regional housing needs, uh, allocation arena process uh, for needs that are particularly unique to community, college communities uh, in terms of the unit types that we see generated here in town, in particular, uh, around bedroom counts um, and affordability of units and the up, the eligibility, if you will, of affordable units uh, as it pertains to the state arena process. Uh, and also advocating for funding uh, to address affordable housing needs and uh, advocate for funding streams that can help improve affordable housing production and the sustainability of the affordability of those units. Uh, and then finally, monitoring efforts to streamline uh, housing proposals uh, that meet local and regional policy priorities. And then one final slide, um, the council has already allocated uh, over uh, $1 million in American Rescue Plan dollars to support mental health uh, initiative uh, of crisis now. Uh, so that is uh, something we want to continue to look for funding related to that overall effort, again, in partnership with our uh, other jurisdictions in Yellow County, including the county. Um, and also looking for funding opportunities to help with continued COVID recovery and funding that meets the needs uh, outlined in the previous uh, agenda item that you just had on our grant strategic plan. Uh, so always, sometimes when there's not a grant opportunity that's out there, uh, we look to help create a grant opportunity uh, for where we may have a need. Um, and as was just discussed, you know, there are funds out there in the state budget that don't even have grant programs developed for them yet. So the legislative platform provides the the avenue and the opportunity for us to uh, have some influence on uh, grant programs and the creation of them that may make sense for us. Uh, and then I would also uh, state that uh, the efforts of the subcommittee here are are to go very much appreciated, uh, certainly by me and our staff team. We have uh, with us, you know, uh, two council members who are extraordinarily engaged, you know, at the state legislative level. They have a very uh, fairly amazing uh, breadth of understanding and knowledge of what is happening, what's in the works, by whom. Uh, and have their ear to the ground in terms of uh, helping us keep track of of these platform issues. So uh, I applaud our two council members here for their diligence on this and I'll use that as the opportunity to turn it over to them for any additional comments.
Vice Mayor, do you want to start?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, so um, the, our city, like many cities, um, is a partner with the League of California Cities as well as the National League. And and those two organizations uh, engage on issues on our behalf every day and and do really good work. But what we saw when we started this up in 2018 was the need to look out for those particularly Davis-centric opportunities, the things that we could engage on with our local legislators to try to benefit our city. And in general, you you've heard me say this before, to me, this is about getting our dollars back. Davis residents pay federal taxes, they pay state taxes as well as the local taxes. And the idea is we're trying to get some of those dollars back to work for you. And we, as you can see, we're having some success. A lot of that success is due to this really great collaboration. Um, our partners at Consero, our city staff that are diligent and looking for what are the, what are the things that we need that we could go after? But also, uh, our our local legislative delegation has been terrific. The staff of those local legislative delegations has been terrific. And and they're really engaged and and care about Davis. Um, the, I would just call out two items on that long list that Mike went through. Um, that uh, are, I I I think are important to dwell on. The the first one is that Taxpayer Protection and Accountability Act. Here is this terrific trend that Petra pointed out of large amounts of resources becoming available to us. But here is that fly in the ointment, a measure that would uh, change already incredibly complicated uh, constitutional provisions relating to local government taxation uh, and and fees. And and it's a pretty hard thing to do to make that even more con- uh, more uh, complicated, even more convoluted. And as just one example, um, uh, Will and I are in a subcommittee that started down the path of looking at uh, various housing solutions. One of those is a a ballot measure for revenue for a housing trust fund. One notion, one way to get there is to have a majority vote tax measure under current law and have a a companion measure that says those dollars go to housing. That it's the intent of the voters to put those dollars to housing. Uh, this measure rules out that kind of possibility and it creates all sorts of other complications as well. Um, the other one, uh, I would just call out and and it's been touched on is, we do have some, I think tremendous opportunities here to to move forward on our climate action and adaptation plan update. Um, on both sides of the ledger, adaptation, but also greenhouse gas reduction measures. Um, and I I think that that's going to be a fulfilling exercise for us this year. Um, and and there could be even additional federal government resources to come. There is maybe a slimmed down version of Build Back Better that focuses on climate change. It's still a possibility um, in this next year. So um, this is a great oppor- opportunity for us to try to meet the needs of the citizens of Davis.
Thank you, Dan. Lucas?
Yeah, thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Just a few quick comments. Uh, appreciate you all entertaining this item this evening. I think for for me, you know, there's really two sort of themes that are guiding, you know, me during this sort of time of unprecedented state and and uh, federal, you know, resources. I think it's really, you know, strike while while the iron is hot. And if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. Uh, and I think those are the items that really uh, have been sort of guiding us in this process. Uh, we definitely, there there is a lot of We definitely, there, there's a lot of resources out there for us to sort of take a good, hard look at and go after. It's been evidenced by some of our successes. And then also if we don't engage, we felt this for a number of years now, but if we don't engage in these, in these efforts, others will be, and they will, they'll sort of reap the benefits of doing so. So with that, just appreciate the energy and that you're all willing to give towards this. I actually did one quick item that was not in the, our staff report this evening that I do think is important to mention as well, a regional effort. At Secog, Sacramento Council of Government, we spent the greater part of the last two years advocating in the state budget for a program called Green Means Go, and which the City of Davis, of course, is participating in. Each of these cities and counties have identified these sort of green zones in different communities. And the City of Davis has identified several, including parts of downtown, certainly. But the real issue and a challenge with a lot of construction of some of these infill projects is the lack of infrastructure dollars and particularly the, the lack of some of the existing infrastructure, like the capacity of some of the underground water pipes and other things that actually would allow for additional infill development to occur. So the Secog region advocated in the state legislature with its entire regional thirteen-member Sacramento region delegation in the state legislature to find some dollars in this, or again, this unprecedented amount of money that's in the state budget. And the Secog region was successful this last year in advocating and receiving about thirty, actually about forty million dollars that is due to come to the region here to sort of be put to good use in throughout the region and different communities and to help sort of close the gap when some of these infrastructure projects, the infill infrastructure projects come along. There's a real need to help sort of make sure that we're helping to create some of the infrastructure, the sort of upgrade some of the infrastructure to help facilitate these info projects. So I think that that is going to be a really good program for the region. And there's an effort afoot to sort of even go for additional dollars in this year's state budget that is actually gaining traction with different regional governments, not just the Sacramento area, but other parts of the state, including the Bay Area and Los Angeles and San Diego have also realized the success that Secog had in this proposal and are going for some of the same types of funding. So hopefully there'll be more legislators around the state that are interested in helping to provide some additional tools for us in local government as we try to do good work in our communities.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for, you know, the information. And is there any questions from Will or Josh around this? Okay, are there?
Thank you. Additional gratitude. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a couple of public commenters. So welcome to the first public commenter.
This is Connor Gorman speaking on item nine, the twenty twenty-two legislative platform. So I just wanted to mention two specific things that I think the city should add to its legislative agenda for this year. So first off, I think the city should actively and publicly support Calcare, which is the California version of Medicare for All. That would provide single payer healthcare to all residents of California. This would greatly benefit residents of Davis and across California, especially the most marginalized and vulnerable. And it would also likely reduce some of the city's costs around healthcare for employees. So I think this is a fundamentally good bill that would have a lot of direct benefits and would also potentially have some nice sanitary benefits as well, especially around fiscal matters. And then I also think the city should oppose AB nineteen twenty-eight, which is a revamped bill from last year that was vetoed, which would create a locked treatment facility in Yolo County as well as a few other counties. And we know that these types of programs are not that effective or efficient for addressing the issues that they are supposedly about. And we know that we need to address the underlying causes of these types of issues and that there are other much more effective and efficient ways to do so by providing resources and services which are not effectively just a different form of gel.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
This is Greg Rowe commenting on Agenda Item Nine, the Proposed Legislative Platform. My comments are specifically directed to the section of the platform document dealing with the regional housing needs allocation process. I respectfully suggest that the verbiage in this section needs to be strengthened. It currently says that the city should explore whether the University of California and other educational institutions should be assigned their own RENA targets to provide affordable housing for their student body. I think this should be much more strongly phrased because it is highly recognized, especially in smaller towns like Davis, that university enrollment growth is a big driver for demand for housing and the upward spiraling cost of rental housing. I therefore suggest that the paragraph be revised to say as follows. Advocate for legislation that would require the University of California and other educational institutions to be assigned and held accountable for meeting their own RENA targets for providing on-campus affordable housing for their student bodies. I think it's important also to include the specification that they be held responsible for providing affordable housing on campus. That would preclude universities and colleges in California from doing things such as UCD did in the past, where in order to meet the needs for student housing, they executed master leases with the owners of multi-unit rental housing off-campus. That practice had a number of negative impacts. It allowed the university to continue expanding its enrollment without providing on-campus housing. By executing master leases, it also essentially locked up.
Thank you to the commenter. And I believe that is the last public commenter. So bring this back to council. And I will again say thank you so much for this work. I think that Mike said it best when he, you know, stated that you two were the best for, for, you know, tackling this and are the, you know, well-versed in, in, you know, you know, where we need to apply our efforts and what's out there. And so thank you very much, very much for the work. I, I agree with the last public commenter on the language there for, for that particular item. I think that that, that is important. And, and, you know, I think that in general, this, you know, just highlights the, the reason that we, we do need to continue to think regionally and we do continue to, we need to continue to be at the table as, as Lucas mentioned and and make every effort that we can to not silo ourselves as we have in the past and find ways to, to be part of, you know, what's going on and how, how the state is moving forward. Because then, you know, we are, our citizens miss out and there's a lot that, that we can benefit from just by knowing what's out there. So I see that Dan has his hand raised. Dan?
Yes, Mayor, I was also going to support at least some of the language that Mr. Rowe proposed. I do think the language we have there about exploring, that language could be stronger. And, and he had some language there that I felt comfortable with along those lines. I wouldn't want to completely rule out the possibility of the campus having housing off-campus, but we have, our, our MOU says that if, if they ever do a master lease situation, then they will no longer take the exemption from property taxes. So we sort of have covered the issue, at least for this MOU that Mr. Rowe referenced. I wouldn't want to foreclose some joint opportunity somewhere someday. But I think there's some merit to his suggestion about using more assertive language than, than just explore. But how do you feel about that, Lucas?
I'm fine with this and adjustments. I just think, I think the key is really this, regardless of what the language says in there. The University of California Davis has been fulfilling its obligations regarding housing since the, you know, since the signing of the MOU between the university and the county and the city. And I think that, you know, I, I just, I don't want to lose sight of that, right? There's a lot of, you know, the commentary around, you know, the, the bad old days or whatever. Sure. But I think like, you know, we've, we've been, we're, you know, the pandemic, if we've learned nothing from the pandemic is that the entire world has changed from, since, since that time. So I just, I'm fine making some adjustments to the wordsmithing of the item. I think that's fine, but I just also don't want to lose sight that, you know, the sort of the comments around, you know, things from ten years ago or longer, you know, and we want to sort of keep, you know, haranguing folks over, you know, the sort of what wasn't done in the past, when what is being done in the present and in the future is exactly what we are wanting.
And Mayor, if I may, I completely agree with the Vice Mayor on that. They are living up to the terms of the MOU and in particular with the significant amount of housing they provided. Where I just think that this, this section refers to is we can do better and they can do better in providing affordable housing for students. And that's the intent of this language, to try to move the ball there. And, and there, you know, the legislature is starting to appropriate funds for that specific aim and providing those resources to the UC system and the CU system and the community colleges. I think we want them to pursue those opportunities and, and that look for more opportunities for collaboration.
Yeah, I was just gonna add to that just very briefly, that I think the intent here with this language is to reinforce that affordable housing is needed everywhere and to bring all resources to bear and to really bring it to the attention of the state legislators that this is a critical issue for all of us. And I think that's really the desired outcome here is to have more resources to, to, to do these projects and to make them affordable. Construction is extraordinarily expensive and it's only getting more so, so more resources and creative, creative ways of approaching these projects becomes essential. So I completely echo that.
So could we delegate the staff to wordsmith that one provision to make it more affirmative as opposed to explore?
I'll say from a staff perspective, we'd be perfectly fine and happy to do that.
In that case, Mayor, if, if you're ready for a motion, I'm happy to.
Yes, I was just going to say, can I get a, a motion to approve this?
I'm happy to, to move the staff recommendation here.
Okay.
Happy to second it.
Okay, great. Councilmember Carson?
Carson, aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Vice Mayor Ferricks?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Great. We are now on item ten, ten A, City Council Communications. Any, any communications announcements? What about AB one, two, three, four, reporting? No? And that brings us to item ten B, which is the long range.
Right, Madam Mayor, nothing to report in terms of changes for the upcoming meetings, although I just will reinforce that your next council meeting is scheduled for May tenth. And that is intended to be a return to in-person format for the city council. So very much looking forward to the ability to do that. And then I do believe that under proclamations, we would be adding Pride Month proclamation for May. And May tenth is the date that we are doing those proclamations. So that would be my suggestion.
Okay, that's great. And then earlier during our joint discussion, Commissioner McCann mentioned some items that, that he wanted to sort of elevate back into the sort of the, you know, the queue there. I can't remember at this point specifically what they were, Lucas.
One of the items had to do with sustainable food choices at city events, I think, or something along those lines. I honestly don't remember. There were, there were three or four other items or three or four items. So I don't remember all of them. My apologies. And the slide was up and gone pretty quickly, so.
Okay. Well, if we can sort of reach back and.
Yeah, I'll follow up with our team at our department head meeting and do a review of those and find appropriate landing, landing places.
The slide is up now. So thank you very much for that. Yeah, so there's the obvious, yes, this sort of PD retrofit proposals and parking lot trees, oh, the issues around sustainable, sustainability impacts to city staff reports. And then sustainability as it relates to the city's organizational structure. So some of those items are more council-related and some of them are more city management-related, but.
Right, right.
All right. And then I know Lucas had, has an item. I, I do have a question just really quickly. I don't know if this is meant, this is necessarily long range, but what is happening with our e-bikes situation?
So we are currently in discussions with Secog, literally just in the last couple of days, actually, about an updated proposal that they are entertaining. And I will be sharing with all of you sort of the latest draft of that proposal and then also engaging in some, in some discussion with Secog staff. And I think with our council liaison, if you will, to the Secog, Secog Board to have some further conversation about that. If, that's one avenue that we are actively exploring and working with them on. And then there's a parallel path that we've been working on with staff to identify the, the possibility of, of doing our own RFP in the event that the Secog plan or proposal does, does not sort of match with our needs. But I think it's premature to determine that that would be the case just yet. So much more information to come very, very soon on that.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Lucas.
Well, no, thanks, Madam Mayor. I just was gonna, one quick item that I just wanted to raise for purposes of long-range calendar was we've had a number of members of the public raise this issue with us, I think, and Shelley, Shelley Bales included about the issue of sort of cats, particularly loose cats in sort of not being leashed and just, you know, the sort of harm that various cats that are, you know, just roaming neighborhoods are causing. So including to, you know, local bird populations and also just, you know, the sort of issues, yeah, that are associated with having stray cats wandering around. So, I mean, we have a leased dog sort of, you know, ordinance, like many communities, and, and we don't have something similar for cats. And I'm not sure that other jurisdictions do have such an ordinance, but I definitely wanted to just raise that issue for placing it on our upcoming council agenda at some point. And just wanted to check in with my colleagues about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas. Well, I think that we have something, we have animal services coming at some point in the, in the future.
Yes, that's right. We have an informational update coming from Yellow County Animal Services scheduled for your next meeting, actually, on May tenth.
So that would be a good time to get some information on what is feasible and what's available and to maybe have a discussion around ideas that, that we could possibly put forward? Or would you like to have that as a completely separate item?
Is that a question for me or, okay, sorry. Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I, I think it's certainly, well, how about we will have a discussion at the next meeting with animal services folks from the county and we can raise that. And, you know, if it, that, I'm not sure that that is, we'll see how that sort of discussion goes, I would say, you know, then there may be an additional step after that. But either way, I'm asking for consideration of putting something on the long-range calendar. So appreciate it.
Sure. I think that's, that's fine. Okay, so if there's nothing else. if there's nothing else, we'll go to public comment. Welcome to the first public commenter.
Long-range calendar. I hope you have my slides up. I'm bringing this up in the long-range calendar because I don't think May 10th is the appropriate date for the hearing on the Olive Drive Department complex. Because we could, there are many complex housing and climate justice issues. And let me give you a preview this evening. You are entitling the four single, re- re-upzoning four single-family housing properties to allow them to consolidate, to put a full, a dense 47-year in an apartment complex. And you're, in the process of doing that, you are giving the developer tremendous, I would guess probably, um, over a million dollars in benefits by, by that entitlement. Slide two, this is a list of the benefits that I concede. There are probably others. We're allowing him by the uptoning, we're giving, allowing him to get 750% more rental revenue out of this property. We are, we are basically not requiring to set aside any land for parking or any, or, or even bike, even additional bike parking because of this, because of this. We are waiving 75% of the parcel taxes. We are waiving SEQA. We're downgrading the tree planting requirements. And most importantly, because it's properties in Davis, he's able to charge at least 50% higher rent for the same size unit as, say, in Woodland. That, the reason he's able to charge 50% higher rent because it's in Davis, the community created the demand for that rent, not the land speculators. We should recapture that benefit. And I think that there's a very obvious environmental justice place to capture that. Slide three, this same property owner owns two older, older apartment complexes, Drake and Anderson Courts, that are saddling trees and particularly in places to charge their electric vehicle. We are banning electric cars in the future of Davis. There needs to be places so renters can charge their electric car, so they are not cut out of the, cut out of their transportation. I suggest quit, propose the upgrade of the Olive Drive property. We should go.
Thank you to the commenter. Next, please.
This is Connor Gorman speaking on item 10B, the long-range calendar. So I think there should be a future council agenda item, or maybe even more than one, on the role of commissions in council meetings. I think this is a topic that had some progress previously, uh, through various discussions and such. And I think it is time to revisit that and hopefully expand upon it. Because in particular, I think that commissioners should be given a bigger role in relevant agenda items during council meetings. And one example of this is tonight's item on CDBG and home funds, where I think it would have made a lot of sense for members of the Social Services Commission to be part of that discussion on the panel side, along with the council and staff. And I think this type of issue goes beyond such an explicit situation. But at the very least, in such explicit situations, where in this case, the Social Services Commission is very directly tied to this item, I think it definitely makes sense there to have commission members on the panel side of those discussions. And then speaking of commissions, I think the Police Accountability Commission should have an opportunity to provide formal input on the military equipment ordinance prior to its sanction reading. And I also think that they should be able to review any possible future purchases of.
Thank you to the commenter. And that is our, our final commenter. Okay, so now we are on to, um, adjournment. But we have a, um, we're, we will be convening into closed session, um, after this, and we don't expect there to be, uh, anything to report out of that closed session. So we are going to, we're going to adjourn into the closed session is, is how I understand this. Yes, okay.
That's correct.
All right. So we need to, do we need, we need a motion to adjourn here? Yes, okay.
So move to Arnold.
Carson seconds.
All right. Council member Carson?
Carson, aye.
Council member Arnold?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Vice Mayor Ferricks?
Aye.
Council member Chapman? All right, folks. We'll see you on the other side.